To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair Wieski.
Here.
Vice Chair Romeo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner Egan is absent. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Stapleton.
Here.
And Commissioner Woosley.
Here.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form. Do we have any requests to speak forms for this item, please?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak under this public comment item who has not filled out a request to speak form? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment. Next on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2011.
Commissioner Kaufman, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Do I have anybody here who was here on the second who would like to second that? Dagny?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Stapleton, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Were there any corrections? Those that were here, vote, signify by voting aye, improve.
Aye.
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 Those opposed, was there anybody who would like to abstain?
Mr. Chairman, I was absent at that meeting.
Commissioner Romeo abstains.
Mr. Chairman, I will have to abstain, I was not present.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris abstains. Next on the agenda, December 8th, 2011, meeting minutes. Any corrections to those meeting minutes? Motion. Commissioner Woosley wasn't here, Commissioner Kaufman was. Commissioner Romeo.
Does Commissioner Romeo move to approve?
Commissioner Stapleton.
I'll second the motion, Commissioner Stapleton.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those abstentions.
Aye. Commissioner Woosley.
And Commissioner Kaufman.
And Commissioner Harris.
Thank you. Marilyn, do we have a quorum when we did that? Since Commissioner Harris was, is filling a vacant seat for this, this time, we have enough to make that vote, don't we? For the meeting minutes? Thank you. That answer was a yes. Next on our agenda this evening is city council liaison reports. None, thank you. Next on our agenda is appreciation and recognition of Max Haltem for his years of service on the City of Reno Planning Commission. Commissioner Haltem, former Commissioner Haltem, excuse me, just rolls off of my tongue. Welcome back.
Thank you. I have nothing to report and I support the motion as presented.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Reno City Planning Commission, myself, I would like to say thank you for all the time we spent together. It's hard not to look over my right shoulder and see you down there. Really, already miss you. So, thank you very much. If you'll step forward, I do have a plaque here for you.
Special thank you again to the commission and to the staff for all the support and all the lively discussion. And a special welcome to our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Harris. So, fill my shoes and hope you live up to everybody's expectations. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, Max. Next on our agenda is public hearings. For those of you who are here this evening, for item number eight, unfinished business, which is our digital off-premise advertising display agenda item, I'm going to take a 10-minute break when we get done with public hearings. And before we start unfinished business, because that agenda item could run a little long tonight, and that'll give us a chance to, to take a break. So, just, just so you know, if you're trying to plan your time of how much, how long this meeting's going to go. With that, I will open the public hearings. First on our agenda this evening is LDC 12-00024, Stonefield Phase 4, amend conditions. If the applicant's representative will come forward, please introduce himself. You'll have 15 minutes to present your application to us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Drilling with Wood Rogers, representing Lenar Communities. If I can get the overhead, please? I will just do a brief presentation. More or less, the request before you is an amendment to several conditions for the Stonefield Phase 4 tentative map. Some of the, most of the, the conditions are clarifications and, and bringing them more in line with a, more specific timeframes and, and quantifying them in some cases. Just to briefly go through some of the requests that are being made. Condition number two, previously required 78 lots and six final maps. At this time, we're requesting that that be changed to allow for greater flexibility in recording smaller final maps. Looking at the map, the, the previous lot and final map configuration was, was directly tied to the village layouts. With the, obviously, the single-family housing market we are in right now, being able to, to record smaller final maps will allow the Lenar greater flexibility for keeping the tentative map alive going into the future and also reacting to market conditions on a smaller scale. Condition number four, eliminates the Northern Park. There were three parks in Stonefield Phase 4. The northern portion of this is now the Stonefield Industrial Site. It was rezoned to industrial commercial a couple of years ago. One of the parks was in that location, so that would be eliminated. And then the other two parks, which are identified in the red, adjacent to Villages 1 and 3, those would be, the, the conditions being amended to, to trigger the design and construction of those parks to the number of lots that are being designed and built in those individual phases. More or less, they'd be designed at the 25 percentile of lots being proposed and then built at the 50th percent. Condition number six clarifies when the, the large channel will be built on the east side of the project area. This ties the construction of that channel to those lots that would be impacted by the FEMA floodplain. It's difficult to see on here, but this blue line here is the, the FEMA floodzone. So that would tie the construction of that channel to any lots that would be impacted in that FEMA floodzone area. Condition number 10 clarifies when the lift station improvements will be made and quantifies the thresholds for which those, those upgrades would need to happen. Condition number 11, similar to condition number six, it clarifies that the, any mitigation to the Sage Point Channel, which is on the west side, right there, would occur when actual improvements are made and drainage is, is actually going to that. Condition number 14 is proposed to be eliminated. This is really due to the fact that it's, it's completed. Really, this is in reference, again, to the Sage Point Channel and building a, an eight-foot maintenance road that's already been done on that portion adjacent to Stonefield Phase 4 and really is a moot condition at this point. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and will reserve the rest of my time to answer any questions.
Andy, thank you.
Thanks.
Bill, before you get started, I'd like to ask commissioners, are there any disclosures on this agenda item? Nope? Okay, very good.
For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer with the City of Reno. We review these conditions and we support the condition amendments as written in your staff report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Bill. With that, I will open public comment. Are there any requests to speak forms filled out for this agenda item?
No, they're not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak form? Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion, questions, or motion. Commissioner Kaufman.
I'd like to make a motion. The case of LDC 12-00024, Stonefield Phase 4 amended conditions. Based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the amendment to conditions 2, 4, 6, 10, 11, and 14 for DCO 600194, Stonefield Phase 4, as written in the memorandum to the Reno City Planning Commissioners for the LDC 12-00024 dated January 4th, 2012.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Woosley?
Unless I like to second that. Commissioner Woosley?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda this evening, LDC 12-00022, Hart-to-the-Hand Preschool. If the applicant's representative will come forward, please, and introduce himself. You'll have 15 minutes to describe your project.
Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group, representing Hart-to-hand Preschool. I'll keep this just absolutely as brief as I can, but there are a couple of items that I would like to point out. This is a special use permit request for a preschool adjacent to residential property. The only real complication here is that they're already in operation. That's good in that it's allowed us to somewhat field-test the operation, find that it is compatible, there's been no complaints, and in fact, they have a very good relationship with the neighbors. Unfortunately, the, they started operation based on a misunderstanding of allowed uses. The site used to contain a school, not a preschool, and they understood that the preschool could operate as a continuation of that use, but in fact, that's not the case, so we're here to, to rectify that. The only remaining issue is that during the course of the review, I had to correct the maximum enrollment number that, that I provided to city staff. I corrected that number. It didn't fundamentally change the review process, but maybe I, maybe I didn't give it to Nathan in a clear enough format because the old number got into the staff report. So, the maximum enrollment is 71 students and that would create a maximum of roughly 56 students on-site at any one time. There's still a large parking surplus, there's a space surplus. It does, the traffic counts are way below what the, the arterial street that serves the site can handle. So, there's no, it, like I said, it didn't fundamentally change the review process. The, the site's compatible, they, they take their neighbor relations very seriously, they've worked hard at that, they've had no, no comment, no negative comments, no, no negative feedback from the neighborhood. In fact, they, they seem to be strongly supported. So, I'd be happy to elaborate on anything that you think might need it. Thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Commissioners, any disclosures? No? Okay. Staff, Nathan, welcome.
Good evening. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff concurs with Derek's presentation. This use has been in existence for some time. Again, this, this area does have a entitlements for a special use permit for a primary school, but we do draw a distinction between childcare centers and a primary school, although the uses are very much the same. This will clarify the use as a childcare center and I did want to clarify also that in the staff report, can we get an overhead, please? The graphic illustration didn't highlight both parcels that are, that are involved with this and the staff report discusses that the playground is a part of the childcare facility. I just wanted to point that out as this wasn't cross-hatched in your staff report. With the condition, staff can recommend approval. Condition related to fire, fire analysis of the site plan, staff believes we can work this out within the 60-day period and staff recommends approval as conditioned.
Thank you, Nathan. With that, I will open public comment. Are there any requests to speak forms?
No, they're not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak form? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion, motion. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question. I understood that that was...
For who? Staff?
For the applicant. I just want to clarify, it's, it's in the report that it's the maximum of 49 children and you're saying that it's authorized at 71 from Washoe County?
Exactly. Right. That's, that's the maximum they, they may reach. They may never get to that number, but they could.
Okay. What, what is the current enrollment now?
49, I believe. The applicant is, is here and will be happy to give a precise answer if you, if you...
Okay. I just, the reason I'm asking is I see that there's a, I mean, the difference between 49 and 71 is a pretty large percentage.
It, it does seem like a, like a large jump. Luckily, the site is, is large, enormously overparked. We only require about, I think it's 13 spaces for the site, or 14 required per city code. There are 25 spaces directly in front of the school operation. The site as a total contains 42 spaces. Traffic numbers are, are essentially trivial, so it, it just doesn't generate any impacts that are going to spill off the site into the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion? Commissioner Woosley?
Yes, I'd like to propose a motion. In case number LDC 12-00022, Hart-to-hand Preschool, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Kaufman?
I'll second that and I can also make all the findings.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda this evening is LDC 12-00023, Renown Regional Medical Center. If the applicant will introduce herself, please, you'll have 15 minutes to describe your project.
For the record, my name is Karen Munson with Yasko Signs for the applicant Renown Regional Medical Center. The application is to, for a variance to increase the maximum sign height allowed for letters from five feet to seven feet. The property has a hardship in the, in the cases that were presented in the findings to the commission, mainly the, the distance that the signs need to be seen, the letters need to be seen from the major intersections of Kitzke and Mill and the, the Wells Avenue intersectors as well. The signage that is allowed to, to the city, the city has provided and also N dot, the blue H denotation signs, stop at Mill and Kitzke, therefore then giving those that are trying to get to the hospital, leaving it up to themselves to try to find out where, where the hospital is. The building has no signage on it at this point. Once travelers get close enough to the hospital, then the, the signs aren't viewed at any height because of other buildings that are in the way, trees, multiple advertising displays, signs of other businesses. So, with that, here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any disclosures? No? Staff?
Claudia Hansen, planning and engineering manager in for...
Welcome, Claudia.
Thank you. Standing in for, very close tonight. And staff can support the request for the variance to increase the sign height, the letter height for the Renown Regional Medical Center sign and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, I will open public comment. Are there any requests to speak forms on this agenda item?
No, they're not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who has not filled out a request to speak form who would like to speak on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion, motion. Commissioner Stapleton?
I'd like to make a motion in the case of LDC 12-00023, Renown Regional Medical Center. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance, subject to conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Harris?
I can second that motion and also make the findings.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Next on our agenda this evening, LDC 12-00017, Rondell Self-Storage. If the applicant's representative will come forward, please? Good evening. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Rob Fitzgerald. I'm substituting for the applicant's representative for the moment because he's running a little late. I would ask that we could move this behind number five, just so he has a chance to get here and if he doesn't, then I'll wing it.
Very good.
Is that okay?
I will, I will do that.
Thank you.
We will continue with this and move it back in the agenda to, to item number five. In that case, item number five on our agenda this evening is LDC 12-00026, NV Energy, Advanced Service Delivery. If the applicant's representative will come forward and introduce herself.
Sure. Can I get the overhead as well?
You'll have 15 minutes to describe your project, please.
Thank you. For the record, Angela Fuas with CFA, representing the applicant, NV Energy. Just to give you a little bit of background information on this project, in July of 2010, the Public Utility Commission of Nevada, also known as the PUCN, approved a statewide initiative known as the Advanced Service Delivery, or you may know it as NV Energize. The purpose of this program is to go to a smart grid or smart meter system that will basically do two things. Allow NV Energy customers to have direct access and management of their energy use and also to provide better management of energy on a statewide level. So, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to approve the proposed construction of a single antenna that will basically receive the information from these smart meters and it's going to be located on the Mariloma Substation. This is already an NV Energy site. Let me give you a little bit of close-up. This is an ideal location for a antenna of this size because there's nothing out here. It's a very remote location. The only way to get out here is by a dirt road. As you can see, there's a mountain in the background. Directly to the west is a gravel pit operation and the nearest residential development, I believe it's about 1,800 feet away, so there's really nothing around here. The antenna itself is a slim-line monopole antenna. If you can see in this picture, this is an antenna that's already been constructed on one of our substations. This is off of McCarran and Longley and it's barely visible. So, this would give you an example of what it will look like once it's constructed. It fits in with the equipment that's already out there. It's going to be shorter than the structures that are already out there. There's a lot of transmission lines and tall power poles already out there. It will not be taller than the tallest structure. With that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you very much. Any disclosures before we go to staff? Commissioner Romeo?
I've had a conversation with one resident that lives near the area and also a conversation with an employee from NV Energy on this issue.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Nathan, welcome back.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff can make the applicable findings for the special use permit and the requested variances. As condition, staff recommends approval. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. With that, I will open public comment. Do we have any requests to speak forms on this agenda item?
No, there are no comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak form? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions, comments. Commissioner Romeo, question?
I have one question for the applicant's representative. Just for the record, this pole will be used only for gathering of electronic data from the meters. It will not be leased out or rented out to any other utility or for any other purpose?
Correct. One of the challenges with doing that is this is included, well, it's, it's part of the substation. So, when you lease it out to other users, you have to give them access to the substation. Huge liability on NV Energy's part and also it's a safety concern. There's a lot of equipment out there that the average person and even a trained person should not be around. So, now and in the future, there's no intent to ever lease this out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stapleton?
Commissioner Stapleton, I have a question for Angela. The variances to reduce the setback from 372 to 210 feet, is that for, I'm just looking at the site plan of where the antenna will be on the property, is that then from the southern edge of the property that the setback would be reduced? Let me get a site plan out. And it looks like it's the southern edge of the property adjacent to the LLR 2.5 use. Or does that then mean that it's, the setback is reduced for the entire parcel?
So, the, the residential zoning is on the west side and I have a map in here to show you. So, the blue is the parcel that we're looking at now and the yellow is the residential-zoned property.
The snake-looking one, is that, that's the LLR zoning?
Correct.
And that's, is that residential? That's large lot residential, correct?
This one here is the LLR, the residential, and we're the blue one.
Got it.
So, our setback is from the residential piece on the west.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you. You showed a photograph of an existing power pole.
Mm-hmm.
And that pole currently stands approximately how tall compared to what?
The one at the Bella Vista?
Yes.
Substation? That one is about 45 feet tall.
Okay, so you're talking about double of this, double of the one at the Bella Vista?
Correct. And again, we're looking at different structures for different substations. So, the Mariloma Substation has structures that go up to 108 feet.
Okay. Currently?
Currently.
Okay. So, it, it will be shorter than the tallest existing?
Yes. If you can see this, so our pole, proposed pole is right here.
Uh-huh.
And here's some existing structures and the power lines that run across the site.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any further questions? Discussion? Motion? Commissioner Romeo?
Mr. Chairman, the case of LDC 12-00026, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit and variances. I can make the findings for both.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Kaufman?
I'll second that and I'll also can make the findings.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Okay. Next on our agenda, we will back up to LDC 12-00023, Renown Regional Medical Center. Next on our agenda, we will back up to LDC 12-00012, Rondell Self-Storage. The applicant's representative appears to be here. If you will come forward, please. We've already opened this agenda item, so you have 15 minutes to present your project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. John Krompottic with KLS Planning. I'm here on behalf of, excuse me, can I give my PowerPoint?
Would you start the clock again, please, also?
I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who is Alan and Stacy Smith, the owners of Rondell Personal Storage. I've talked to, I believe, every one of you, not at length, but certainly some discussion about the project, my thoughts about where we're at. You know, we've all talked about, I, I think we all believe in the TOD in this community. I think it's something that we've embraced. It's been a very intense planning process, and, and I see some of our discussions going about the location and the use of the TOD, but in this case, we need to be focused on the, the variance and the use because, well, the use is allowed with the special use permit as staff has pointed out. So it really boils down to the variance. So I'm saying, how do I make my point about, you know, why are we doing 20% landscape because it's in the TOD, and what does that do to promote the TOD? And, you know, I talked to an industry expert who's a consultant with, to the owner, and I looked at seven different mini storage sites, and I think the rub here is the TOD standards for landscape are very aggressive, given the type of use that's allowed in the TOD. And I look around and find less than 10% landscape for most mini storage sites. And then the other thing, of course, is that it's an infill property, and that the people buy the property three and a half years ago with the intent to build or expand on it, and you already have this perimeter landscape. What I've suggested to staff and also to the NAB was that if we could somehow enhance the perimeter landscape, and I have a condition to do that, which is, I think, really becomes the big amenity to the public eye and the streetscape, particularly as it relates to Yori Park across the street. So Actually, if I could, I'll just go through a couple exhibits here. Is that okay on the screen? Can I just put them on the screen? Okay. So you can see, there's the existing perimeter landscape, what I've suggested to my client and to the neighborhood board, and also to staff, and now I have a condition proposed for the commission, to the commission, is to completely redo that, with really the one exception is some expert, me and an arborist, to evaluate the condition of the trees. And of course, mature trees have a lot of value in the community, so that if we could look at those, preserve them, if it's agreeable to you guys when we get to that point. But that is 13% landscape. The site is what it is. There's the big hole in the middle. I have some photos for you. I'd be glad to share with you. But it really kind of speaks for itself in terms of this type of product and what you do with a site like this. So they expand it, and I thought, you know, I went out and looked at the site. Like I said, I have several photos of the existing landscape. In my opinion, I don't think it looks very good. I don't think it does much for the community, and I think we could do a very nice job in, in redoing that and enhancing that part of the neighborhood. I, I think too, you know, I've had to do a quick study of mini storage, and just because it's in the TOD doesn't change the product. And I think, you know, to be credible here, when I said I went to several different sites, I looked at what I could find as the very nicest site around town, and also something that was done fairly recently. And I went down to the, I took some pictures of, I think it's a rebel, rebel product at the corner of Longley and McCarron. And if you look, it has very intense landscape along the perimeter. I had engineers sum up that area for me, and it just so happened that that was 13%. The reason I'm sharing that with you is that I think in the case of this product, which is completely screened off from public view and public access, and in this case, with the exception of the one little opening over there on Yori, that the quality of the landscape, again, would probably have a lot more purpose than just looking at a number that's a quantity. So with that, and then, and then in terms of the TOD standards, I'm not going to suggest they're flawed. I think they're difficult to work with in this case because if you do what the TOD, fundamental to the TOD is more coverage, we add coverage, but we don't have area to put landscape because the product is circulation, drive aisles next to buildings, and it's just the way the product works. So the only other way to do that, to get FAR up or building coverage up, is to stack stories. My client happens to be a bankruptcy attorney that says he's representing a property in Reno that's two-story, that's in BK, because, at least one of the reasons, is that they have 80% vacancy on the second floor. So I, I think when I say about challenges with the market, about the way the site lays out, the typical product type is perimeter landscape, we think that we could do a better job dealing with public types of issues with good perimeter landscape, and then the fact that to get the FAR up, you'd have to go to multiple stories, just doesn't seem to work in, in terms of industry in this market, that becomes the basis for my points about the variance. I, I'd be glad to get into a few points about the variance findings, if you wish. I have my own thoughts on those. And then anything, if you want to get into, drill down in, in the industry types of standards, what I'm calling industry standards, and how they really kind of butt heads with the TOD standards, I'd be glad to do that. I, I really, I hope you guys know that I want to make these, I, I think the TOD is the way we should be going in the community and doing more of the inward development, but we need to find the right incentives, and I question if we really have all of that figured out this time. So with that, I'll just save it for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Krompottic. Disclosures. Commissioner Stapleton?
I had a conversation with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
I had a conversation with the applicant's representative also.
Thank you. Commissioner Romeo?
As have I.
Commissioner Wiskey?
As have I.
Commissioner Wusley?
As have I.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaufman?
As have I.
Thank you very much. Staff? Welcome back, Nathan.
Good evening. Once again, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. In 1996, a special use permit was issued for this site and allowed the expansion of a mini storage, which at that time was community commercial zoning. There were several conditions with that project with the expansion, which included 15% landscaping, that that landscaping be perpetually maintained, that a garbage disposal would be located onsite, various other issues that through the years have, this site has seen gone neglected. The initial special use permit allowed for an expansion on, on the site, which was considerably less in size than what's currently proposed, because that portion of the, of the expansion was, wasn't built within the timeframe of that special use permit. It's since expired. Staff can support the special use permit request to expand the mini storage in, in the TOD in this area, primarily because this is a internal development and does seem to achieve the, some, some of the objectives of the TOD with flora ratio and increasing density in the area. The variances is outlined in your staff report. Staff is unable to make the findings required to omit the landscaping. The landscaping is already under what was initially required in the 1996 SUP. The transit corridor outlines several policies related to landscaping that this, that prioritize the landscaping. The landscaping can be accommodated onsite. Staff can't make the findings for, for this case. An additional component that John didn't touch on was that a truck rental facility that, that is currently operating on the site. As proposed, if, if this expansion is, is developed, there obviously wouldn't be room to, to continue with the, the storage, so this would be used as a, sort of a satellite office for, for off-premise. We have recommended a condition that the trucks not be allowed to park on the street, and should this expansion not come to fruition, that the planning commission were, were to continue granting the SUP to enable them to do a truck rental on this site, that, that the number be limited to six vehicles and all adequate parking and site improvements be in place before that, that continues currently. You can see on this vacant site, this was a site visit, and we have a U-Haul parked on an unimproved site. Other site visits, we see currently outdoor storage on unimproved surfaces. Obviously, that's a code violation. So we think as condition that, that'll address that aspect of it. Other conditions would be to remove the barbed wire that's currently onsite. John had indicated that the applicant has since taken that down. I haven't been onsite to verify that, but that barbed wire has always been a code violation. It wasn't allowed in the community commercial zone. It's not allowed in the mixed-use South Virginia Transit Corridor Zone. And we had also recommended a condition of approval that all, all applicable prior conditions of approval from the original special use permit be adhered to, particularly issues with waste management. We've had several code violations on the site related, probably the nature of the beast when people move and, and leave in a hurry. That's why the condition was in play. So again, staff can support the special use permit request for the expansion. We are not able to make the applicable findings for the variance request. Should the planning commission choose to grant the variance request, we would recommend that the perimeter landscaping be brought up to current code standards. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. With that, I will open public comment. Do we have any requests to speak forums that I have not received yet on this agenda item?
No, we don't.
Okay. I have one request to speak, a forum filled out from Rob Fitzgerald, who wishes to make a, a statement. Rob, you'll come up to the microphone. You will have three minutes, please.
Yes, Rob Fitzgerald, the possible builder for the project if it's approved. Wanted to add a couple of things right at the moment that I think, maybe I'm being redundant, but really need to be said. One, the project that is currently proposed, any smaller is of, you know, it starts becoming questionable whether it's worth doing. This project's been on and off for a while, and the applicants finally made a decision to move forward with it. Two, the proposal actually does add some perimeter landscaping. The very bottom right-hand corner, as I'm facing this, that one patch of landscaping is now pavement, and this proposal will be landscaping that. Beyond that, any additional landscaping to the interior is, you know, maybe technically required in the TOD, but it's of absolutely no value to anybody because it can't be seen. This project is completely surrounded with existing buildings, and if this building doesn't get built, the view into it is a lot worse than the view into it will be with the building there. But there's no real ability to see much inside. You know, there's a very, a 30-foot entry that you'd have to be standing on, looking in to really see anything. So landscaping in there really doesn't do much to enhance the neighborhood. But if this project does move forward, I know that the owners are, are very interested in enhancing the landscaping that does exist, which is very prominent and will go a lot, a good distance in improving the looks of the neighborhood. As it relates to previous violations in the use permits, this current owner was not aware of any of these conditions and was very surprised to find out there was anything lacking, and is more than willing to bring everything up to the original conditions, as well as whatever might be imposed on this application. So I understand that this variance is a variance, but it's kind of one of these cases where if it's imposed, it does impact the project, even though it really doesn't do anything to enhance it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to make a statement on this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak forum? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions or discussion. Commissioner Romeo?
I have a question for the applicant, or the applicant's representative.
Yeah, please.
Commissioner Romeo? Can you hear me all right? Okay. What is the difference in square footage between 20% of the landscaped area and 13%?
I think it's 30, 3,100 square feet, plus or minus a couple of square feet. Isn't that the math we did? Yeah.
Nathan, I think you're being addressed by Mr. Krompottic.
Is that the difference?
That's, 3,100 square feet is the difference?
The difference, yeah.
Between 13% and 20%?
13 and 20%, yeah. I guess, I mean, it's very close.
And it, as, as this project, if the special use permit is approved and it's built, is there any public activity other than driving in and dropping off storage material that will be going on in the interior of that project?
No, gated, gated access, you know, with card access is the only public, well, that's not public, that's customer access. Otherwise, there is no public access.
So what about the truck rental part? How would that?
What, what they told me and Nathan, I hope, would see this the same way, because I didn't even know about it. He went onsite, asked about it. I called client. We had a conference call soon after and talked about the, the truck rental. She said it's very much satellite and ancillary to the mini storage for people that need a way to pick up or drop off their goods, and said what they'd be committed to is no street parking and going and getting their truck rental at the U-Haul yard that's more than a few blocks, but probably a half a mile away down on
On Virginia.
Virginia at Moana. So then you would, would ever be able to take the order, and then you'd have to go pick it up, drop it off, and know that there's restrictions to not park it on the street.
So they wouldn't be renting trucks at this facility? They'd be renting them from U-Haul, but you'd be referring them to U-Haul?
No, I believe they have the license to rent them, but they don't have the truck onsite.
Okay. So they would have to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So the access is 24 hours, or is it 12 hours, seven to seven?
I think it's 12 hours that they're open.
12-hour operation, no public access to the outside?
No public access.
Unless you're a customer and you have something stored there.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kaufman?
For Nathan. Nathan, you made a comment that they had opportunity for more landscaping. So could you tell the commissioners where you see that on, on the map that's up there?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The, the site has the capacity for it. This is a, this is a view from Yori Avenue. You can see you have a direct and broad line of sight into it. There's, there's room for, there's room for the landscaping.
Okay, but go back to that, that map, because I'm, I mean, I'm looking at the map with the existing buildings where, you know, they can't expand what currently is on the outside, and if, I mean, I don't see where, where the additional could go, and that, that, that's where I need you to help me, if that's the case.
Frankly, it could be, the, the, the most obvious would be a smaller building, setback with landscaping in the front for the view for, for Yori to be, to soften the building. But that would require a smaller building, similar to what was in the proposal, in the 1996 proposal. I understand that that may not be what they want, but when we look at the technical aspects for a variance, we're looking at, can it be done? And in our opinion, the site plan could be modified to accommodate that.
Okay, so it'd have to be internal. Okay, so it'd have to be internal inside where the, where all the buildings are, existing buildings, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Wusley?
Question for staff. So, I understand that the only opportunity is to reduce the, the square footage of the building inside, but just had a question about the perimeter landscaping. If, if we were to consider moving forward with this and the variance, could we intensify the, the perimeter of this to, to, I don't know, bring it above code? And, and really look at that thirteen percent and see what we could do with that above and beyond?
Yeah, I think I'll refer that to Mr. Kropotic. We had discussed an option, should the commission go that way. I think he had some language that staff was, was in concurrence. If that's the direction the Planning Commission goes, would achieve that objective. I'll let John present that if you'd like.
Would you like me to show you the condition or read it or?
Please. Do you have a copy for us, John?
Yeah, there's one right there if you want to. Can you zoom that, please?
No, I mean, for all of us?
Not, not
Oh, okay.
Just have it on the screen. But basically, you know, I have the lead-in paragraph there about the benefit. I think really the redo, the key thing is the last sentence that says redo a perimeter landscape would go a long way to enhance public view of the site, particularly as it sits directly opposite Yori. And if you look at that arrangement, I, I mean, I think, you know, so here's, here's the window where you can see into the site what Nathan's referring to right there, that little opening. Otherwise, it's completely walled off by the existing design from visual public access. So, but I think the sensitive thing is Yori Park really is a very nice park. And you look at it and it's a beautiful little neighborhood park. And I was thinking if we could somehow complement that, at least in terms of streetscape, where you screen the building and it adds a nice streetscape along Yori. I mean, it's something for the community to gain from. So what I did is wrote this condition. I'll read it to you, and then you can see it on the screen, is applicant shall reconstruct the entire perimeter landscape area. The landscaping shall meet the landscape code in terms of tree and shrub size and density along with the appropriate ground cover and irrigation system. In an effort to save the existing trees, they should be evaluated by an arborist to determine health and, health condition and viability of saving. If the arborist recommends removal, each tree being removed shall be replaced at a two-to-one ratio. So that hits to Jason's point a little bit in terms of the tree intensity. A final landscape plan prepared or licensed, a landscape architect shall be submitted with the building permit and new landscaping installed prior to C of O. You know, if you want more, I'd be glad to add it. I don't know, other than trees, I mean, we got a pretty aggressive landscape code, you know, six trubs per three hundred square feet of landscape. When that stuff matures, it has a very dense impact. I'm in, by no means put off by adding more landscape if you want more aggressive language, though. But I think our code is, is really strong and competent in terms of screening and landscape quantity, you know?
Question for staff again. Thank you.
You bet.
So if we are considering letting them build internally the, the full square footage and we wanted to intensify the perimeter, I wanted to get your feelings and recommendation on what we could do to intensify the outside above the code. Or do you think that the code is enough, the current condition?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The, the current landscaping's code, code is, is rigorous and would require a variety of trees, evergreens, deciduous trees, lots of ground cover, which, which would improve the site considerably. That is, that's more than likely going to be required anyway because of, we don't know what the valuation of this is, but we suspect that it's going to be more than forty percent of what's already there. That requires a full upgrade to current code. So that landscaping is more than likely going to be, need to be upgraded anyway. What John is proposing would, would, would go slightly above and beyond that, and, and staff could certainly support that. If I could also follow up with Commissioner Kaufman's question and sort of ties in, in line with yours, with, with the special use permit, we don't think that we can condition outside, for example, the, the southern parcel, the adjacent parcel, it's also owned by the Rondell Storage, although there's room and we think that that would be a benefit to it. In standard code, in, in the TODs, we'd be allowed to, if there's not room on, on-site, we'd be allowed to put it, if there, if there was a boulevard there, we could, we could make, take that requirement and say, well, let's transfer that to the boulevard and enhance the area. There's, there's not an exception in the administrative code for us, for us to, to transfer that to the adjacent parcel, although if that's the direction the commission wanted to go, I think it could probably be a, a request that could be honored by the applicant.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I have a, a question for John. This building they're putting up?
Yeah.
I assume, and, and that there's openings in every one of these spots, every, all four sides for storage, is that correct?
There's openings?
So, in other words, it's like garage door, roll-up type doors?
That's right. And that, that's where, when I talk about the nature of the beast, you know, you usually have drive aisle next to roll-up doors, and that's the way you access your units.
Okay, so three hundred and sixty-five degrees around this building is all roll-up doors? Is that what you're telling me?
This one now, now we get into more issues. That is, the industry consultant says they've found a market for smaller units, okay? Five by ten. So, and because this building, you see it's a little bit fatter than the other ones, those are all roll-up doors. These are all roll-up here and here, but he's actually got an internal walkway to the, it's five feet wide, I think he said, to the, some of the inside units.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's all doors and walkway, the whole building, that's what it
So even if you consolidated this building some, putting landscape next to this building, I mean, would hinder part of
The operation, it certainly would. It'd be very odd. I mean, it's not to say, you know, it'd be odd, it would certainly meet the code, right? But you'd just arbitrarily, in my view, you cut off part of the building and you put in landscape, and then the question you guys have is what's the public value? What's the public good? And, you know, you have that opening, as Jason said, looking right through here, the little opening from Yori. Is that an issue? You know? It's, it's, it's odd. And like I said, I talked to a guy that's twenty-eight years in the business, that he's never once done internal landscape for mini storage. And it's because you do a nice sawb on the exterior and you just don't have any, you do have some visual access in this case, because it's not completely screened off, but it's just that one small opening. So, yes, we could remove building and do it, but that's what my point, point was about the public benefit and public good. I just didn't see it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I have a question first for staff, for Nathan. When I was reading this, I thought a lot about the TOD and the, and the requirement. And I guess I wanted to ask for a little bit more background on the standards in the TOD and what the intent is behind requiring twenty percent landscaping on any site, what the sort of vision and intent is of that regulation. I was thinking that, you know, John's point is well-taken, that in the, in the self-storage industry, having additional landscaping to this point is not common at all. However, it doesn't seem like putting, or, you know, storage existing in TOD's also not common. So, there's this conflict here between these existing standards and a use that isn't a use you would usually find in a TOD. So, what's the intent of landscaping? What are we trying to accomplish with the landscaping in other uses and this one?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I, I think, I think you bring up a good point, because many storages are typically seen in industrial zoning districts. Even when this, this expansion was initially done, it was done in a community commercial zone, required a lot more finesse in the design than, than we found at that time. Now it's two thousand and twelve, we have, we have higher expectations, frankly, in our code. We also have the, the Transit Corridor Design Standards, which, which require a little more. We support this expansion as is, pretty much matching what, what we're already seeing on the perimeter for, for design, because it's an internal expansion primarily. If we saw a mini storage coming up on a, on a blank parcel, I think we, we would be working a lot more diligently with revising the design and, and finding a, a design for mini storage that could be compatible. It, it's still a dance when, when you have a, a use that isn't technically allowed with a special use permit, providing that the commission can make, make the findings. Regarding landscaping in, in the TODs, I'd, I'd direct you to page four in your staff report, policies CD twenty-eight and CD thirty. Both emphasize high priority for, for landscaping and the overall appearance within center and corridor plan areas. The city should encourage all properties located in center and corridor plans to provide landscaped areas appropriate to the related environment. Translated to code, you know, that, that equals twenty percent. You look in the South Virginia Transit Corridor Plan, it talks about design softening the palette with, with landscaping. I, I think, from staff's perspective, we can support this expansion, but meeting baseline code when there's ample room to do it. That, that's the primary reason we're not supporting the variance. Let me give you this, this shot from Yori. I mean, talk about room that doesn't affect the circulation. We have the whole width of this building that has potential for landscaping. There's ample room on the site to do it. And our perspective is that, that code and the policies in the master plan require that to serve its purpose, to soften the, the impact of otherwise industrial use in a transit corridor zone. That's, that's our position.
I just want to follow up. So, to decode that a little bit further, the idea of the higher landscape standard in the TOD is to soften, what does that mean? It's supposed to, the vision of the TOD is it's supposed to be more walkable, right? More agreeable to a pedestrian walking down the street? Is that the idea? And that landscaping may, in terms of design, I mean, what is it, what is it accomplish?
It enhances the site, and in this particular instance, given the, the juxtaposition between pretty, what's frankly, an industrial use and, and the uses in the transit corridor, meeting those standards serves as, as a buffer. It's a buffer between what potentially incompatible use and the goals and objectives for the transit corridor. It's a compromise.
And to add to that, it's, it's a combination.
For the record?
Claudia Hansen, Planner Engineering Manager, thank you. In addition to just pedestrians, it's for the mixed-use environment. So, in this instance, you've got the park and residential located to the east. So it's not just pedestrians walking by, but in, this is truly a mixed-use area, you've got the storage, plus you've got residential and the park directly across the street. So it's to enhance the, the overall appearance of the site as well as the view into it. So from a design standpoint, it breaks it up. I mean, this is a large parcel that's an industrial use in a zone where the intention is to have uses that are amenable to pedestrians and that are sort of broken up? Is, is that a good way to, to, in term, from a design standpoint? When you say soften?
I would agree with that.
I, I, I understand John's point of if, that in this case, it seems to me like this is a use that, that maybe doesn't necessarily, I mean, it's an existing use, so this is a moot point, but this really is a use that doesn't go along with the vision of the TOD. You know, it's this large parcel of an industrial use. It's already allowed there, so, you know, that's, so that's what we've got in this instance. But, so what do we do? You know, this, in, in a, in a different type of use, you know, requiring that much landscaping, you would see it, but if it really is internal to the site and you really wouldn't see it, I'm thinking about that eastern edge where you can see onto the site. I don't know if any of the other commissioners did this, but I went down there and I drove around the site, and you really can see onto the site from that eastern edge along Yori Park where that picture is. I also think right down the other end of that lane, the western edge of the site, the entrance to the storage, you also can see in. In thinking about, you know, adding more landscaping and intensifying the landscaping per John's suggested condition, maybe to think about, what do you call that, where you put landscaping that blocks that entire view in there, like a screen? I don't know what you guys would, would call that? So that it's not just on the perimeter, but you're adding landscaping that blocks that whole view into the interior of the site? And I guess that's not a question I'm thinking out loud, and that's a thought for the rest of the, the commission.
Questions? I have a question for staff, Nathan. If this were still zoned CC, and that's what it was prior to being converted with our TOD MU, what would the appropriate amount of landscaping be, do you know, for this particular project?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. It was fifteen percent was, was required at, at that time with the original S U P was adopted.
And right now, we're talking thirteen percent is what is being proposed by the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if, if we assumed that because it's an existing and it's an infill, and we, and we brought, the applicant brought it up to current standards, they would need to increase their landscaping area by two percent, correct? To take it from the thirteen percent they're proposing to fifteen percent to meet current CC or even?
It, it hasn't changed. The landscaping was and is fifteen percent.
So they're already, they're already below what was
According to, to the applicant, the application.
Right.
We haven't done the calculations until we get an official landscape plan.
Do we have any idea what that amount of square footage is, that two percent number to get it to fifteen percent? Or does the applicant know? John, do you?
Just for the record, Bill Goll, I just quickly marked it. It's nine hundred square feet.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Question for the applicant's representative then? John, would you put your photo of
The site plan?
The site plan back up, please? You've got, on, on the four corners of the proposed building, you have insets. I realize a couple of those are probably doors to get into the center area. Could those be landscaped?
Boy.
I mean, they're not in drive aisles. They're not in the way of turning radiuses.
Are you saying this, this right here?
Yes.
Is that what you mean?
You have, you have four of those. Why couldn't those be enhanced with some landscaping?
Yeah, I don't see, you put a, you put a little radius on it, right? Something like that?
It's your design. I'm just asking why.
Actually, it, it's the general contractor and, yeah. You know what? It seems reasonable to me. I hope it's not an operational issue. If that, if that makes the commission feel better about this, I'd certainly be
Well, I mean, it, you know, you're asking for a variance. And, and right now, I don't see any, any movement on your side whatsoever. It's thirteen percent. We've heard that you can't make the building any smaller, the applicant won't, won't go for it.
Yeah.
Unless I've, I've misunderstood it, I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel about it, but that's kind of, that's what I heard. And, and yet I see some areas in there that could enhance it, at least to take it to the fifteen percent that it should be today. I mean, I don't know where the other, the nine hundred square feet went from when this was built, but somewhere along the line, there should have been fifteen percent landscaping when it was built.
Yeah, I have no idea about the history. I would just
So, so I, you know, I'm, I see some, some areas in there where I can see drive aisles moving through there. You can still get to outside storage units and, and doors without driving over landscaping. And probably walkways to the inside without, and I believe part of the landscaping could be hardscape with, with pavers or whatever that would, would not be deducted from the, from the square footage. My question to you with that information is, is this the best you guys can do? Is there more that you can offer? Is there more that you can offer? Because I think my fellow commissioners kind of see some area where there can be some improvements made.
To go to Ms. Stapleton's point, you see, she talked about something through here. It's, it's a different type of design, right? Where you come in on one street and go out in another. So to add landscape there just doesn't work. It blocks off the access. Another thought I just had along the lines that you're pointing to, that corner, maybe something right here, but now we'd have to check, make sure that that works for the fire department. If that's wide enough for fire, I think that this end of the building makes sense and then these.
Well, it appears from a photograph that we were shown that there's already part of that is landscaping. So I don't know why that would, would, would interfere with what the fire department is looking at.
Actually, that landscape.
Would you like us to take a vote on this? Or would you like a continuation so you can take a look at it and maybe run it by fire and we put you on the agenda for next month?
Yeah. Can we take just a brief timeout?
Sure.
Talk to Mr. Fitzgerald about this?
Give you a couple of minutes right now. We'll just take a brief, three minutes. How's that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Krompotic, go ahead.
If you look at the little, we just quickly did the arithmetic, you can see the two fifty in each of those pockets. It sums up to about eight or nine hundred square feet. So I'd certainly be willing to accept that as a condition or somehow, whatever you want, if that's agreeable to the commission to add that extra landscape. All those little pockets that we could find.
So if we, if we, if we made a condition and changed it from thirteen percent to fifteen percent, leaving it to staff's approval, the applicant would be okay with that? And that would be the condition? And then we'll let staff review it and give final approval on the percentages?
Yeah.
Okay. Nathan, are you okay with that? Would you, for the record, please, just let me know that staff's okay with final review.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, that, that would be acceptable to add to the existing condition if the variance is approved, to bring the perimeter landscaping up to par. And I think we'd also want to include John's suggested amended condition to enhance the perimeter landscaping above code as well.
Okay. Very good.
If I could jump in, Nathan, if you could clarify the variance, potential variance conditions, I think they got cut out of the staff report. They did out of my version, so I just want to make sure in case it was more than just mine, if you could clarify those conditions.
On page six, should the planning commission approve the variance, staff recommends the following. Prior to issuance of any permit, perimeter landscaping shall be brought up to current landscaping standards as described in Article seven, landscaping and screening and reading municipal code.
Thank you, Nathan. Nathan, well, I'll have you hang on to those and, and turn them over because they are missing from our staff reports also. So if, if we get that motion going for variance, I'll have you collect everything and turn it in for the record, please. Thank you for the help. With that, I have, I don't have any further questions. Commissioner Stapleton, do you have a question?
I do. I had just one thing to add on to the discussion that you just had about adding the landscaping, the increase up to fifteen percent. And the consideration of the fact that the landscape standards are in place to soften the design and something that we should actually see, what about on that eastern edge of the site, that being the only place you can really look in, the public can see? What about along that drive right there in addition to or instead of those four corners as another suggestion? Because that's the, you know, the intent is that.
I think it's best that we leave it to the applicant to design his project and bring it forward. I mean, if we give them a percentage, a minimum percentage to meet, then, then that's what we do and we let the applicant decide where they're going to put that fifteen percent and let our staff do a final review on it.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to add to your suggestion of the four corners and just throw that out there as an idea since we're, what we're talking about is a visual impact here.
I think they, as Nathan pointed out in his photograph, they, they need the square footage along that existing building also to, to meet that. And if they don't, they certainly should when staff reviews it, be looking for that. You're right, absolutely. Any other questions? Any more discussion? How about a motion? Commissioner Romeo would like to comment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a bit troubled with this. The TOD, great, great idea, and I can understand that if this was a, if there was an, if this was a strip mall and there was a inside hobby store and hair salon or whatever, that you would want that, that landscaped area. But my concern with this property goes more towards the park across the street. When I was on the nab, we spent a lot of discretionary money on that park to bring it up and, and it, this property's kind of an eyesore. I, I don't want to be so hung up with, is thirteen percent the right number or fifteen percent the right number? I don't think it's the percentage of the, of the landscaping out there. I think it's the upkeep and the maintenance of the landscape that's there. And you, sure, you can look through right now. I've also driven by there because I have, I have a fondness for the park across the street. When this building is built inside, you're not going to see through there like you do right now. This is going to be new storage building. It'll be asphalt, it'll be paved, and there, there'll be a building in there. I, I don't see how a few percent in landscaping, and now we're talking, now we're down to nine hundred percent, that, yeah, nine, or nine hundred square feet of landscaping in, in a lot this size that the public's never going to come into. The only time you're going to be in there is if you're a customer. I don't see how that in any way, on the finding, material, materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or interest of property, or improvements in the vicinity. And the proposed variance is consistent with the intent and purpose of this title. I think I can find all those findings. A few percent or a few plants or a few whatever, the percentage to me is not as important as the care and the maintenance of it once it's put in. Now, we have a new owner here, they want to improve the property. I see an opportunity for a win-win for the city and for the owner. They're going to spend some money, they're going to upgrade the property, they're going to upgrade the landscaping. And now when you're at Yori Park and you look across the street, hopefully you'll see a nice piece of property there. Personally, I can make the findings for the variance. So with a few, a few adjustments here that we talked about, I can, the staff can make special use permit. How can you not let the business go in that is a twelve-hour business, not open to the public, screened off and fenced off and require landscaping inside that is totally useless for the public? I, I just can't see that. So I can make the findings. I would support the special use permit and the variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. Commissioner Kaufman, go ahead.
I have to support Mr. Romeo. I too, before we went to the fifteen percent. When you, you look at this, this project, I could make all the, the findings for the variance, especially, and part of it has to do with the buildings, the existing buildings already there, not being able to expand, what the public's going to see. So, I mean, I'll support it either way, but again, I have no problem with what they have, especially if they upgrade it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Harris, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess the, the short simple of the landscaping issue and a perspective of, of the percentages and those kinds of things is, is more of the quality versus the, the quantity. And if you've got a nice park, you've got a nice area and you're going to enhance it, it, the, you can put a lot of things and they may not look good, but if you have some good quality, you can, you could be much better. So I, I think with the, with that, I can support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Wusley?
Yes, I just want to add that I, I agree with all my fellow commissioners. I, I'm so close to supporting this as is, but I do want to come back to, you know, we're kind of focused now on the, the entrances and, and what Nathan put up with this picture really does, you know, have a little bit of, you know, light in that area. And so if there was that, that little rectangular spot there we could work on, that looks like it's already parked, could be for landscaping, I think that would be an advantage. But besides that, I do agree with the, we're worried about the perimeter and the quality of the, of the landscaping. That's it.
Thank you. In rebuttal to what my commissioners are saying, you know, I, I could make the, the findings at, at thirteen percent, but I also feel that the, the project, if it was zoned in a CC zoning, and when it was originally built, had a requirement for fifteen percent, whether it be the previous owner or the current owner who has modified the property not to even meet minimum standards at fifteen percent is, is an irritant to me. Two percent, nine hundred square feet doesn't seem like a lot, but it brings it in to at least conformance with what it was originally zoned and what was originally requested of it. Whether it was landscaping in the middle, it was paved, whether it was something, there was fifteen percent or should have been fifteen percent at some time. We now have code enforcement. Code enforcement should be going out there. If, if you drive down the street and you don't like the way somebody's keeping their property up, you call code enforcement and let them determine if there's a problem or not. And, and so, you know, I, I can make the findings and I would really hope that the modified condition will say fifteen percent to at least bring it to CC. Twenty percent in this case for this business existing with an infill project is too much. And I'm, and I agree with that a hundred percent, but I believe there can be more effort put out and should be put out, and that would be in our condition to fifteen percent. So, but I, I will support, and I'm ready, Commissioner Stapleton, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to add, I support what you say and I, what you just said, I can support special use permits and the variance with maybe up to fifteen percent. Or we could call it wherever you can see into the site, which won't be a lot, because I agree that if you can't see it, what's the point? You know, Commissioner Romeo said there's going to be a building be built, we won't be able to see it, but we will be able to see that building from the access. So at the access points, additional landscaping there and intensified along the perimeter as John suggested, I could support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Romeo, would you like to make a motion?
Can I ask the applicant a question, just real quick, John? Would, would you have a problem with going with the fifteen percent approved, the, if we were to approve the special use permit and variance with the caveat that you maintain the fifteen percent landscaping wherever it may be, thirteen now and two percent somewhere to be added?
You know, I looked at those pockets and on the surface, it looks like we can do that, so.
I came up with eight hundred and eighty-something square feet, so you're, you're close.
I said nine hundred, or, or Bill did, yeah.
Okay. All right. I am, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion then.
Microphone is yours.
In the case of LDC twelve dash zero 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 one seven.
Commissioner Romeo, real quickly, before you go.
Yes.
Would you please split these two and turn them into two motions? I know it's written as one.
Absolutely.
But let's do the SUP and then the variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. In the ca, uh, case LDC twelve dash zero 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 one seven, Rondell Self-Storage, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permits. I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll second the motion. I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the SUP? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Romeo for a variance.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC twelve dash zero 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 one seven, Rondell Self-Storage, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance, subject to conditions with the enhanced landscaping as read into the record by the applicant and a rate, a percentage to meet fifteen percent. I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Harris?
I could second that motion and make the findings as well.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Good luck with your project. With that, we are going to take a ten-minute break and re-adjourn at seven forty PM. Thank you. And get on to our next agenda item, which is unfinished business, public hearings. Number one is AT dash three-two dash zero-seven, digital off-premise advertising display including light emitting diodes.
Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Just an emphasis on that case number, AT thirty-two dash oh-seven, as in two thousand and seven. We have been looking at this for, most recently, for about the last six months. We've had a workshop with staff, the Sign Industry in scenic Nevada. We've had a workshop with the planning commission. We brought a draft ordinance back to you a couple of months ago and have had this on as a discussion item for the last few months at the planning commission. Looking at the current draft ordinance, I took your comments from the last meet, last couple of meetings and incorporated some changes. It may or may not have hit the target, but we will go through those tonight. I will just briefly go through the changes that have been brought forward, starting on page three of the ordinance. No permanent off-premises digital display shall be erected within a thousand lineal feet of a primary or secondary school classroom building, that was amended, or residentially zoned and used parcel without the approval of a special use permit. So in other words, the first part of number four requires three hundred lineal feet separation, so from residentially zoned property. The digital would have to be a thousand feet. It could be reduced down to three hundred with the approval of a special use permit. So that's the change there. And for the school classroom buildings as well. On page four, nine, numbers nine through thirteen are the changes to this ordinance. The changes are to twelve and thirteen from previous draft ordinances. Twelve being, before we said, we had that it would be digital sign, digital off-premise advertising within the McCarran Ring. We've amended that to no further north than McCarran or further west than McCarran. And then the southern boundary would be Demone Ranch, Arrow Creek Parkway. And number thirteen was a clarification. There had some, some questions came up last time about how the digital signs would be considered with existing, how the existing signs are and the spacing of the existing signs. Thirteen was meant to clarify that. All permanent off-premises digital displays shall meet all required spacing requirements. So in other words, if you had a sign that, an existing static sign that did not meet current spacing, we understand that they are all deemed conforming, but if they did not meet current spacing, you would not be able to replace that with a digital board unless the spacing was brought into conformance with the existing standards. On page five, the main change there, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Stapleton for bringing this forward. I did reduce that down to eight seconds. We had it at twelve on the draft. And if you review the minutes, it does state that planning commission does agree with the twelve seconds and that statement is in the minutes. There was further discussion following that statement, so I continued to look into it. And as I explained in my staff report, in the attached staff report, the Federal Highway Administration recommends a four to, four to ten seconds as applicable, as acceptable, and with a recommendation of eight seconds. So that was where the eight seconds came from. But on the last draft, and if you, like I said, if you check with the minutes, it does say that the twelve seconds was agreeable with, by the planning commission. I don't believe there are any other changes on that page. Page six of the draft ordinance, you asked that the distance for the luminance measuring, I'm not sure if I said the distance to measure light intensity, be put in, related to the size of the sign, and I did add that table back, added that table in that was provided by clear channel for what those appropriate spaces would be. I did remove, there was a fourth line on there that they had proposed, which exceeded the six hundred and seventy-two square feet, which is allowed by, which is the maximum allowed by code. They did have a larger one in there, so if they're wondering why it's a shorter table, that would be why, is because that size was not, is not allowed within the. the city. And then number fourteen is the removal requirements, and that has been also amended to have a rate of eight times the square footage of the proposed display, with a maximum of fifty percent of the square footage being able to be obtained through banked receipts. And that's for anywhere throughout the city, other than if you're removing signs along Virginia Street, between California Avenue and Plum Lane, we have that brought down to two times the square footage, and that is to encourage the cleanup of the clutter of the signs in that area. That was a direction from City Council to look at that area specifically, that there's too high of a concentration of signs in that area. There's only about ten signs in that area, so that would be kind of a limited time offer, I would say, that there's, with only ten signs in there, and if you can only remove two times the square footage, that's, that, that requirement would only be available while those signs are still there. And I believe that is all the changes from the, there might be a couple technical wording ones that I changed, but those are the main changes from the draft ordinance that you saw two months ago, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
Marilyn, would you like to, at this time, I know it's in our staff packet, address? No? Okay.
I think it's clean, and.
Okay.
And you can proceed.
Thank you very much. With that, I will ask for disclosures, I'll start to my left, Commissioner Kaufman.
I've, I've met with the billboard representatives, I've had many, 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 many emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Woosley?
I've had many emails and had discussions with applicants' representatives.
Thank you. As have I. Commissioner Romeo?
As have I.
Commissioner Harris?
As have I.
Commissioner Stapleton?
And I.
Thank you very much. With that, I will open public comment, and will let everybody know that everybody is going to get equal amount of time for their presentation this evening, it will be three minutes. I have a stack of wish to speaks, request to speak forms, and then some who do not wish to speak, but we have their opinions, we will read those into the meeting minutes this evening. We'll start with John Frankovich. John, come up and introduce yourself, please, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is John Frankovich, I represent Clear Channel. This is a long time coming, we've been working on this for over four years, and actually a lot longer than that. The matter before you, we think is a reasonable compromise, in most instances, we have a few limited suggestions. It will allow the industry to employ modern technology to improve their project and better serve the, the public. I had a handout that I provided to.
I'm sending it down the way right now, John.
Okay, and I just put a copy of it on here, that really addresses the areas where Clear Channel has some concerns. The first one is on page three of the proposed ordinance, that's section under prohibited locations B four, and what you've done there is increased the spacing to a thousand lineal feet from residentially zoned and used properties, but you eliminated in that the sections that says on the same side of the street. We think the same side of the street limitation should be reinserted in the second paragraph. These projects, these signs have been utilizing that same side of the street process for the last ten years, when you, when you take that away, all of a sudden you've eliminated half of the locations by making it now on both sides of the streets you've eliminated. So we think that that restriction should stay. The next one is pointed out is in page four, which is paragraph B ten. Under B ten, this would allow or prohibit the signs on collectors or local streets, we think that there should be an exception to that where there is appropriate commercial or industrial zoning, for the simple reason that if you're in those zonings, the signs are not going to have any impact, and you'd still have the spacing requirements. Finally, or not finally, the next one, we have concern about paragraph twelve B on page four. This further limits the locations of signs in, in the city. There's already a limitation on the number, and if you reviewed paragraphs five, six, and seven under the prohibited ones, in certain areas, you're limited to the number. Now what we're doing is limiting them even further for the digital, and the limitations are in most of the logical places where you would want them, along three ninety-five North and three ninety-five South and I eighty West. We want to be able to go to Boomtown, to include the commercial areas to the north, and at least go down to the shopping mall to the south. Finally, the comment we have has to do with page six, number fourteen, that is not on the chart, but this has to do with the, the ratio of eight to one. While Clear Channel certainly has the inventory and doesn't object to that, think that that number is excessive and would unreasonably impact some of the smaller companies who probably don't have the inventory to comply with that. But more importantly on that one, think the bank signs ought to be given full credit. Those signs were banked over the years with a full expectation that they would be able to be utilized to trade for real signs. Those are signs that were taken down, and we think we ought to get full credit, and this ordinance is drafted now would eliminate that, right? And those are my, my comments, will be available for any questions, I went over them quickly, I understand.
That's okay, John, thank you very much.
Okay.
Next will be Mark Ray.
Good evening, Mark Ray, twenty-eight oh-two Outlook Drive in Reno. I was going to talk to you about the law tonight, but most of you, as a majority, have already thrown that out. If the people's vote mattered and the law mattered that we were dealing with, we wouldn't even be talking about these changes to the law today. So I wanted to go into reading the letter that came from a local resident that I read today and expresses my views exactly. Oh, welcome, Commissioner Harris. Dear Planning Commissioners, as a resident and business owner in Reno, this is John Hera, John Hara who wrote this. I am very concerned about your planned decision to approve digital billboards within the city. Given the tough economic times this community is suffering, I cannot believe that the city is planning to further jeopardize our recovery by supporting the myth that digital billboards are an economic driver. Billboards in any form are only one form of advertising among many, they are expensive and do not target a market. Unfortunately, like air pollution, they violate public space and force everybody to suffer their commercial messaging because they cannot be turned off or ignored. Digital billboards exponentially increase the damage to our views and neighborhood character. They can be seen in the evening hours for one to two miles. This is intentional, and without question, they destroy the scenic beauty of any area where they are placed. Put your billboard on top of your storage units at the Rondell Self-Storage and see how the park looks, okay? The assets that bring tourists to the area are compromised forever. Property values around digital billboards plummet, other businesses with on-premise signs are negatively affected, and public safety is reduced. How will digital billboards economically help the community when they radically change the character of an area into an aesthetic determined by product pushers and marketeers? Few small businesses can afford to advertise on billboards, as evidenced by the space-available billboards around Reno now. I'm asking that you respect us as citizens first and as consumers second. The question Reno needs to ask is what kind of city do we want? Voters in two thousand determined that we wanted less billboards and no new ones. Despite this, the democratic process and the intent of the law was sabotaged by the city's deal with the billboard industry that resulted in a banking system to allow billboards to continue to mar our scenic viewscapes. The expiration of this corrupt system was recently silently extended in another deal with the billboard industry, and here we are again, facing a dramatic concession to a single industry exchanging our scenic heritage for the illusion of an economic contribution by an industry that pollutes our views without any consequences for the loss they inflict on our community. I can't, I can't read the rest of the statement because I don't have time, but I'm appealing to your, your common sense and your sense of community and your, maybe your conscience, more than I'm asking you to even worry about the law anymore. Although I will say this in my last few seconds, the city attorney is asking you to follow the losing side in the Arizona case, think about that, the arguments of the losing side is what the city attorney wants you to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Next is Lori Ray, following Lori will be Craig Toon.
Lori Ray with Scenic Nevada, and I can finish the letter. He goes on, if you believe that the billboard industry has our community's interests at heart, you're lying to yourselves. As one example, please refer to the billboard which is empty and now nothing more than blight at Mayberry and Forest Street. This monstrosity is a poster child that symbolizes the choice you are making to support the profits of the world's largest outdoor advertiser, that would be Clear Channel, over the profits of a forward-thinking local Reno family-owned business. The cost to the community of this grossly insensitive billboard is sadly evident every day I drive past it. It can't be ignored, and the same pain will become all of ours, impossible to ignore, if you allow this blight to overtake our beautiful city. So let's just let him go all the way down to Arrow Creek, let's get him all the way up North Virginia, let's go all the way west out to Boomtown, let's get him all over town. I urge you to protect the scenic beauty of Reno by upholding the vote of two thousand to prohibit new construction of billboards, and to recommend to the Reno City Council that digital billboard should not be allowed. Finally, yours is not as tough a decision as you think, if you take advantage of both local and state law that clearly protects the wishes of the community to protect, protect our scenic heritage and our tourist economy. I'm mystified by why the city's legal council is going to such great lengths to find loopholes and nonsensical reinterpretations of the laws to, to support Clear Channel's position instead of the citizens. What happened to we, the people? That was from John Hara. I just wanted to add one more thing, if I have a minute. That would be the area that you're trying to clean up, it's only a two-block area between Cheney and, I don't know where it's, Center Street, and I didn't count the billboards, but let's say there's six billboards there, and for you that are interested in trades, I think they all belong to Clear Channel, if Clear Channel took all six boards out, they'd get to put three digitals somewhere else, maybe in brand-new locations. What if a property owner now has the space, they could put up two possibly, because there's a thousand lineal feet between those two pink lines there, there's, you could put possibly two billboards there, two traditional ones. So as you go to try to do trades to eliminate the blight in certain areas, you're going to lose some billboards, but they can come back in. When we talk to Scenic America, I say to them, what can I say to the Planning Commission? What can I say to the City Council? To try to convince them that this is not the right way to go about cleaning up the community, and they say they always find their way back in, they always do, they'll come in with a variance or whatever to get their, their boards back up again. So don't, if you want and truly want to clean up this area, look at an ordinance that will get rid of the bank, we don't need that bank, they keep putting more permits back in, so they can take them out again and put more digitals up. You're not going to get anywhere with this trade idea. So over the past four years, Scenic Nevada too, has been trying to convince you not to take this, go down this road. Please protect our scenic mountain views, our city streetscapes, uphold the vote of the people, take heed of the voter survey from last year, protect our streets and highways, and on and on, protect our economy, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Craig Toon, Toon, I'm sorry. Following Craig will be Ryan Saunders.
My name's Craig Toon, I'm with Saunders Outdoor Advertising, and appreciate the time and accounts the commission's taken to hear us tonight. Digital billboards, it's, I wish we could look at it as just a, a new technology and changing out faces, rather than the emotional, it's taken on such an emotional stand of lights and distractions and things, but there are some towns and some cities in Arizona, for example, where the planners are in favor, they think that digital billboards are crisper, sharper, they look better, more professional look. In Europe, there's been studies done, and almost everything over in Europe, even on the walking paths and that, is all digital signs, and due to the real estate restraints that they have there, they're not as big as the bulletins that we have here with freeway traffic and that, and to be read from cars, but it's coming of age, it's like a smartphone, it's just new technology, and I was hoping we all get more comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Saunders. Following Ryan will be Susan Schulte.
I'm Ryan Saunders, I represent Saunders Outdoor Advertising, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you here tonight. Saunders Outdoor, just so you know, we're a small family business, and we pride ourselves in what we do, we think we're a viable business, have several small children at home that we, we support, and we think it, it's a good business, it drives business to other businesses that are in your community, we feel like this is something that they want. We recently put up our first digital billboard in Utah, and we've had a great response and good feedback from it, from the community and from the businesses. It's already sold out, it's in, in high demand right now, and we, we do have some serious issues with the ordinance, we do agree with most of the changes that have been put in regarding, you know, the, the time the sign can be up, we don't, we, we don't disagree that they shouldn't be moving or flashing and all that, we, we agree with those changes. The area that we have most of the consternation with is, is that we have, since two thousand and seven, we've only been in Reno for ten years, our, our family business, and for the last five years, we've been dealing with this issue. And, and the best that we can come up with is a trade-in for eight, eight faces for one face. Eight signs that we would have to trade in to put up this new technology, and we, we disagree that we're somehow magically able to put up new faces. There is a cap on the number of signs that are in Reno, and we have honored that cap. In fact, we haven't even gone up to the number that are allowed in the cap. The cap roughly allows two hundred and seventy-eight billboards, and there's forty or so less than that up right now. And so, for our company who only has seven signs in the city of Reno, to ask it to take down eight in order to be able to put up one LED face, I think you can see how unfair that is, and there's been some case law in, in other areas that shows that it's illegal to pass laws that unfavorably enrich one company over another company. And if we had time tonight, I could refer you to some of that, that law, but I just want you, you to consider this statement, that a community has the responsibility to provide legislation that does not impede normal competition or unjustly enrich one company over another participant. And that, it just seems ridiculous to ask a company that only has seven signs to turn in eight to get one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize to Susan, I thought you wanted to make a statement, you checked the box that you are in opposition and do not wish to make a statement. Would you, would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. So for the record, Susan Schulte does not wish to make a statement and is in opposition. Doug Smith does not wish to make a statement, he is in opposition, and he has written here, follow the R-one Billboard Initiative petition by, and I cannot, Reno, in two thousand, it was approved by fifty percent registered voters to forty-three percent against. I apologize, Doug, if I didn't get every word out of there, but that's the gist of what I could read, these will be entered into the record also. With that, I will ask, is there anyone else here in the audience this evening who has not filled out a request to speak form, who would like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I mean, closed public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion, debate. Commissioner Kaufman, we'll start with you.
This is for staff, Claudia. The, the question came up, a billboard that has two facings, one pole, or, you know, it has two sides to it, so it has two bill, you know, readable sides to this one pole. two sides to it, so it has two bill, you know, readable sides to this one pole.
One structure with two faces?
Yeah. Is that one billboard or is that two?
That's one structure. One billboard.
That's one billboard.
It's one billboard.
Okay.
The number of faces will come into play if you go to, if you have one, if you have one structure with one face, you can't take that down and put up a two-faced one somewhere else. So both things come into play, but it's considered one structure.
So for the overall count of, Commissioner Wieske, for the record, for the overall count, 278 structures, not 278 faces, is what our ordinance goes by?
Correct.
Does that help Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, that...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify it for me, too, so.
Okay. You know, I think we talked about the 12 seconds and eight seconds. And if my memory's right, which sometimes isn't, but I think we just kind of threw that 12 seconds up. Is that correct? Claudia?
I'm looking in the, in how it was discussed.
Yeah, and how we came up with the 12 instead of the eight.
We got to the 12. That was through the table that we had included previously from various cities across the country. I think we surveyed 14 cities, something like that. And they varied from, I think it was five seconds to 24 hours. So we brought that down. The lower ones were five to 20 seconds. We went with 12 in the middle to begin a discussion on that. And then, more recently, I've gone to the Federal Highway Administration information, and that goes with eight seconds.
Okay. The eight to one ratio, too, that's still in this packet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
For anywhere, for anywhere other than Virginia Street between California and Plum, which is two.
Okay. And then the west and north limits?
Yes.
I guess, why are we limiting those?
Okay. When we brought this to council a year or two ago, they were concerned with reducing the clutter on Virginia Street, like I mentioned earlier. Also areas that have recognized to, trying to be a dark sky area, that was one of their concerns, as well as the gateways to the city, and they wanted to protect those areas. Going north, the Panther Valley neighborhood, in the past has had a neighborhood plan in that area, and they have tried to maintain dark skies as much as possible in the Panther Valley area. And then up further north, and for reference, Panther Valley is right where Virginia, the Virginia Street 395 intersection, that's basically where Panther Valley is located. And then north of there is the, you enter into the joint plan area, and you would, you'll remember that I brought forward the Reno Stead quarter joint plan amendment last year, and we had multiple meetings with the NABs and CABS up in that area regarding the joint plan, and they had a large concern over billboards and electronic billboards in particular. And so that's why we kept it out of the northern area. And then further south of that is mostly residential, so between Dandini Par and McCarran is mostly residential in that area, anyway. And then to the west, Mogul, Verdi, and I'm blanking on the name of the community on the other side of the freeway from Boomtown, over in that area, have all tried to maintain as close to dark skies as possible. The Boomtown sign, we have received numerous complaints on, as well as the Gold Ranch sign for passing traffic in that area. And we will be addressing, those are both on-premise signs, and we will be addressing the brightness of those through the on-premise ordinance that will be following this one. But that is why we've tried to keep it out of there, because of Mogul, Verdi, Belli Ranch, I believe is it is, over in that area as well. And for numerous NAB and cabbines that I've been to in the past out there, they have also discussed trying to maintain dark skies in that area, and again, a gateway that city council mentioned that they wanted to protect in an earlier direction. And then going, I think those were your two areas that you were concerned with. Going south, that was, there's already existing lights and signs down in the area, down to, we added at Damani, I believe Mr. Frankovitch brought it down to the freeway US 580, and that seems reasonable down in that area as well.
Okay. I guess this is for the applicant or the billboard?
City of Reno is the applicant.
John? And I, you know, we've had this bank, and that bank came from basically the train track. Is that correct, Claudia?
Yes.
A lot of it did, that's correct. John Frankovich.
Okay. So why, if you could, is there enough, can you put up the 40 or 45 billboards today in the ordinance that we have, not that this is written, but what we have today? Is there room enough to put up all those?
It's really not something, I might have to call on Representative Clear Channel, but with the limitations that are right now with zoning, spacing, and the limitations in other locations, at least in my opinion, and I'm not giving you an expert opinion, I don't think you can do that if you want it to.
I'd like somebody from Clear Channel.
Susan Holzhouser from Clear Channel Outdoor. No, there's not enough places right now. We have more in the bank than what we can put up because of the zoning, new zoning that's come in, limitations, so that, so, yeah, we don't have enough locations.
Okay. Okay. I'll hold the rest to discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. More questions? Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Frankovitch, I believe, with regard to the request for language to include use and only commercial and industrial adjacency zoning. Do you have an example of something that that might fit under, just to understand what your point might be?
I had to get reminded, excuse me. There is a location that is an example, would be Kazazza Street, right behind Shopper Square there, off of Wells Avenue. That's a long area that is commercial and/or industrial that is also, it's a, isn't a minor street or a arterial. That's one area that comes to mind. I don't have other ones.
So there would be no residential within approximately how many feet?
I don't know, but the ordinance would still restrict it proximity to residential.
Right.
So if there was one within right now under 1,000 feet, under your proposal, you couldn't put a digital in there. And I don't know whether that 1,000 feet now applies to the traditional billboards or whether it's a still 300. That one is one of the ambiguities I'm not sure about. But it'd be at least 300 from any residential, and a digital would be at least 1,000, along the way that your ordinance is written now.
And so I guess, does that follow along into where you have under prohibited locations that would be along one of the major, you know, 395 or 580? Is that somewhat similar as to what you're looking at?
I'm not sure I understand your question. We're looking at having the locations, basically that we have now, for traditional billboards and not further restrict them for a digital billboard.
Maybe I could help clarify on that. The 580 is, that he brought up for B-12 on page four, that is to further extend the southern boundary down to where 580 crosses. So that's a separate issue. And then the other one on number 10, to add commercial and industrial zones, staff is agreeable to that. That's, it brings it into an area, you would still have to have the spacing requirements from residential, but it would bring it into industrial, areas that are all industrial or all commercial. So over, I'm thinking more over by the airport, over in those areas, or in completely commercial areas, Kitsky, where you don't have that residential, where you're not going to have the residential separation requirement. And the collector or local, because you can have collector and local streets in commercial and industrial areas. So that was not the intent to limit it out of the commercial and industrial areas. So I'm in agreement with that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I have a question. I live in Reno, but I don't know what 580 is.
395 South. I think he, it's...
395 South is now called 580.
Where, and what?
Where would the, so in this suggestion, where is that? Where would the southernmost, where would that move the southernmost boundary to?
I may have a map for that. Clear Channel should have a map on that as well. There we go.
I didn't have a map, I didn't put it up. Barnes and Noble. I'm upside down. This is Barnes and Noble, if you're going, I'd call it 395 South.
Keep going, one more turn, one more turn.
90 degrees.
There you go, there it is.
North and south is north and south. Okay, I understand. I still call it 395, but it's called 580 now that they're extending it to Carson City. This is Barnes and Noble. Right here is the off-ramp, if you wanted to go to the summit shopping center. For Dillard's is right here.
So that would take it...
You get off the off-ramp right here, but this is where we're asking that it be extended to that location.
So that's two more cross streets further than Arrow Creek, which is what you have in the background.
That's the next, if, John, can you point to, yeah, that's Arrow Creek and Damani.
And you would like to go...
Which is how it's written now, so it would just go down to include that area where the warehouses are.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wusley?
Start with a question for staff. I don't know if this is for Marilyn or you, Claudia, but it is in regards to the, say, we're taking the larger companies out of the picture and say, companies that exist right now that do not have eight billboards in the bank or total. And I do, I do see both sides of the story, and I wanted to get staff's thoughts on how the smaller companies would approach this.
The eight, it is written in such a way that, in looking at the inventory, other than those, that there's some miscellaneous owners that own just one on the side of a building, that they're not one of the main companies, but that everybody would be able to obtain a digital board the way it's written currently. There was, there was cap, as you know, put on boards 10 years ago, so that established how many boards are in the area and who has those boards. They have, it's my understanding that they have been bought and sold over the years, but they, the cap has been in place for 10 years. That exists now, and that's what we're working with. And staff doesn't see an issue with it at this time. Everybody would be able to, who owns, when any of the main companies would be able to obtain an electronic sign.
So if you owned seven signs in the area, would you be able to obtain a digital billboard?
You would need eight. So, and the smallest one is 10.
The smallest one is 10?
Yes.
Thank you. A question for the applicant, please.
Just so it's clear, John Frank, I represent Clear Channel, and we're not the applicant here.
City of Reno's the applicant, Jay. Commissioner Wusley?
City of Reno. But yes, thank you for coming up. My question is towards, were you guys able, was Clear Channel able to go up and visit any of the North Valleys, CABS, NABs over the last three years, to talk to them about digital billboards in the area or their thoughts or views on that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Romeo?
Okay. Joint corridor plan with Washoe County going north up 395. I seem to remember this issue on billboards being brought up when that plan was written, and there was a representation of people here from the industry, and I believe Mr. Frankovich was here at the time. And the issue was, can we regulate a business out of business by doing that? And at that time, we were told by staff that the areas that are zoned currently for billboards that are already in those corridors would still be zoned for billboards in those corridors, that they would not be prohibited. Now, I don't, and maybe that's because I've been around here for a day or two, but I don't see why we are changing that now and prohibiting the use up on 395 to the north. I'd like to know what's changed on that. I heard that here in the city of Reno, I heard it at regional planning because it was a joint Washoe County regional issue. And at the time, I had a concern, and I made the comment, that we can't regulate a business out of business, and was assured, and from what I heard, we were assured here and we were assured at regional that it would not do that. So now why are we not doing them in the north corridor?
Well, you're correct in your statement in that we are not changing the existing standards for boards. So the boards that are there are conforming the existing zoning, what's in place now for standard boards is still in place, and we're not touching that. This ordinance only has to do with digital boards. So that's changing to digital board.
So if there's a board in the joint corridor going north, and a company wants to take that board down and put a digital in, they would not be allowed to?
The way that...
On this ordinance?
On this ordinance, correct.
Okay, that's something that I absolutely can't support. I, also, going west in the gateways when we were doing the work going out to Boomtown and including that in certain areas, the same question came up about advertising along Interstate 80. And I believe there was comments made that where there are currently boards, there would be able to be boards. And in another conversation, in the minutes that we talked about, I believe, I specifically talked about one for the Pepper Mill that was out on Interstate 80 as you come into town. And I said, now if they were to take that board down, would they be able to put up a digital at that time? And the answer was yes, because there's a board there, and they would have to retire whatever the ratio is coming up on that. Now, according to this ordinance, they wouldn't be able to do that. Am I correct?
I'm not sure what conversation you're referring to in the past. We've never allowed digital boards in the past.
I understand that, but it was going to, going to digital, since we have had so many meetings on this, and there have been comments made that I want to make sure, I don't understand why we would be restricting them from changing out an old antiquated board west of town with a new, with a modern digital and taking down or banking at least half of them in that same area. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, when council directed staff to go back and review the ordinance, they asked us to be concerned with gateways, areas that are interested in dark skies, and then the South Virginia corridor. So the gateways would be west on, west on 80 and north on 395 and further south on 395. And the dark, the areas that have discussed dark skies would be Verdi, Mogul, and Panther Valley in particular, and Bella Ranch, if I'm saying that correctly.
Okay, well, once again, that wouldn't be my intent. I would think they should be allowed. Okay, I would think they would be allowed, and if the city council would want to change that, unless the commission here, you know, votes to agree with that, I won't agree with the limitations that are in there right now. But if it went to city council, then they could change that. But I don't see why you couldn't take three or four boards down west of town, north of town, or south of town and put up a digital. town, or south of town, and put up a digital, or whatever the exchange rate is. To me, that doesn't make sense. But, small, the small company, the represent, Ryan Saunders, I just have a couple questions, if you would come back up. I understand you have a very limited number of boards. Now, how would you suggest that we write an ordinance that would limit and create an exchange ratio for an industry that we're, we're trying to get the number of boards down, but wouldn't be two owners for a small businessman, but would be still palatable for a large business? How could, how could we do that?
Well, the only thing that I've been able to come up with on that is, is, is kind of a hypothetical. I don't have anything specific written down, but let's say, for example, Company A has 95% of the market share, and Company B has 5% of the market share. So the difference between those is, is 90%. And so, if you pick eight as the number that you have to, to, as, as the number, the magic number that you have to trade in to put up a digital, which I, I wanted to be clear, we're very against, because we look at this as the gentleman before us that wanted to upgrade his building. We look at it as an upgrade to our existing structure.
So from your point of view, you'd want to put up seven digitals?
Right, but if you wanted to come up with a fair formula...
Well, that's, that's an honest answer, and I appreciate that.
If you wanted to come up with a fair formula, then if eight's the number, then we should be able, be only required 90% less than the Company A to turn in to get a digital, to be fair, from one company to another company.
Okay, well, I...
And so if eight's the number, we shouldn't have to turn in any. Does that make sense?
Well, I, actually, from where I sit, no, it doesn't make sense.
And a percentage is fair, is it not?
Yeah, well, we can't write ordinance...
I mean, if you want more time to, to work it out and see something in writing, then I suggest that we just table it. I mean, we've already been working on it for five years. What's it going to hurt to table it for a few months while we come up with a fair and equitable exchange rate for all the companies that are involved? And if you do it on a percentage basis, then it's going to be, it's going to be fair across the board. What you're saying is...
No, we're not debating this. I appreciate the answer, and...
But initially, what you're saying is, and I just wanted to clarify this, is yes, you can put up a digital, but you got to eliminate all your business to do it. And then if we, if, if that doesn't make economic sense, then you're going to be put at a competitive disadvantage, because you don't have digitals.
Okay, well, thank you for your input.
So, thanks.
The flip times, I guess I'm happy with that. Did the eight to one, is that something that we were hard and fast on? Is that, is that something that we determined, that we said we're going to live with eight to one, and we'll fall on the sword and dive?
There was not much, there was not much discussion on that last time.
Okay. All right, well, I'm done with questions, so get ready for the comments and the meat of it here in a minute.
I have a question for staff. On page two of our staff report, the first full paragraph starts with section 18.16.902, restrictions on permanent off-premises advertising displays, and then we have paragraph A and And also down below that, we go to section 18.16.903. Below each one of those, in parentheses, is an ordinance number and paragraph and a date. That tells me that, that these are our current ordinances, and you have not highlighted or underlined anything, so we are not changing our current ordinance, which, in this case, is a result of question R1. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so based upon what we have for current ordinances, we're allowed billboards in this community. We are allowed to replace structures, we are allowed to replace billboard faces. It just states that we cannot exceed what we had back at the time of the vote, which was November 14th, 2000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so really, when we look at a ratio for deletion, then do we, and maybe Marilyn, this is a question for you, but we'll start with Claudia, do we need to go back, and does this ordinance then get adjusted to reduce the cap number? Because the way I would see it is, we could ask somebody to give up eight to one. If we don't adjust somewhere the overall cap number, then they may give it eight to one, but somebody could come in and put up static signs or something else to maintain, excuse me, the status quo of what the cap number is.
And that's addressed in number 14 on page six, that if you were to turn in, say, eight boards for a digital one, then the overall number would be reduced.
Okay, and...
And that's already in place also, for if you're exchanging two smaller signs for a large signs, larger sign on page eight, that's already in existence, where we reduce the number. If that situation ever came up, we can't think of a situation where that has ever been used, but, but it's already in place in the ordinance, and this is the same, the same idea of reducing the number.
Marilyn, I know that you read over these staff reports diligently, and if, do you agree with Claudia's answer to paragraph 14 on page six, that that would reduce the cap number and, and maintain a reduced number? Would it allow us to ever go back up?
When you look at 14, it, it does not allow those, those billboards to be banked, so they are in fact lost at that point. So I can't, I can't envision at the moment the ability to go back up.
Right, okay, okay, so that, that would be reducing the number of billboards, and that's how it would be done, through that number. Okay, thank you. You answered that question for me. On, Claudia, on page five, paragraph E, paragraph E, is that our current ordinance and spacing? That's not something new that we're debating?
That's correct.
That's current today, based on static spacing?
That's correct. That is current wording. Anything that's changed is either strike through or underlined, so that is existing wording.
Okay. Okay, very good. I have no further questions. I'm ready to go to comments and discussion, unless there's another commissioner who would, has a question? Commissioner Stapleton? Go ahead.
I have a question for Claudia about the language that Mr. Frankovich suggested on B4, the, on the same side of the street. Could you, could you explain that, what the issue is there?
Sure. And just a clarification on that one also. The first sentence on number four is existing wording, and that says, "That no permanent off-premises advertising display shall be erected within 300 lineal, 300 lineal feet of a residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the same, on the same side of the street." The new wording is, and this is where, just a quick clarification, Mr. Frankovich said that, that we omitted wording, we haven't omitted anything, we're adding new wording in here, so nothing was omitted. "The no permanent off-premises digital display shall be erected within 1,000 lineal feet of a primary or secondary school classroom building or residentially zoned, or a residentially zoned and used parcel without the approval of a special use permit." So you could still get down to that 300 feet, but you'd just have to go through the special use permit process to show that it's appropriate in that area. The digital boards are, are more noticeable, definitely, that's, I believe that's probably why they're putting them up, or why they would like to put them up. So to show that it's, if the school classroom building or the residentially zoned property, if they can show it through a special use permit, that it's really not going to affect it, and it's okay to bring it down to 300, then that's fine. We just, we, it's hard to write the ordinance for every single situation, so this gives us that opportunity to look at the situations on a case-by-case basis, and it could be appropriate to bring it down to 300. But 1,000 is, we felt was a safe distance for that separation with, with no review, with no additional review.
Okay. Commissioner Romeo?
Does it have to be a special use permit? Could it be administrative review?
It could be a site planner view, that would, that would be the administrative equivalent, I guess. It's a different process, but a different set of findings. But it could be a site planner view. It's still noted within 750 feet. It's a 30-day process for a site planner view, so everybody is still noticed within 750 feet, still goes out on the development and review memo, and that can be appealed to public hearing.
Okay, so if that were the case, they could do that site plan review, and if they didn't get a favorable ruling, they could appeal it?
Either way, it can, it can be appealed. So the special, special use permit with Startup Planning Commission can be appealed to city council. The site planner view starts administratively, that's a 30-day process, and then that can get appealed to, to, to a hearing officer, to the hearing officer?
Hearing officer.
And then that would go to city council from there.
But at least with that, you're not spending the money for the special use permit?
It's about, I want to say it's about $1,500 less, because you don't pay for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kaufman?
No, I'm ready for discussion.
Tell you what, let's open discussion, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Kaufman.
Well, first of all, you know, we have an ordinance, we passed a vote on limiting billboards, and now we're trying to change all of it. And the, and, you know, I'm having some real hard times. One is with the eight to one ratio, and the perfect example is the smaller companies. And, you know, what the one gentleman said about, well, there's, could be a ratio, or, you know, that's like penalizing the larger companies, because they invested in the, in the city, and they have more billboards, so, you know, the ratio has to affect them more. And, and I don't think that's a fair answer. So, I think because we, we voted, the citizens voted, as did I when, and, you know, the limit should be the limit. That's what it is. It shouldn't be, because we already are regulating where they have to go, we're already regulating where they can be put up. So I, I have a real issue with the eight to one ratio. And I'll be real honest, I, I couldn't support this at all, with the eight to one ratio. The other thing is, we talk about doing the distance of where it's 300 for residential today, and, you know, now we're changing it to 1,000, and, you know, make, no, it is 1,000?
Claudia said that that was not a change, that is the way it is written currently. Claudia, would you please step in and clarify that?
Let me find the correct sections here. So on, "No permanent off-premises advertising display shall be erected within 300 lineal feet of residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the street." So that's, all of them are 300 from residential. From, for digital, it would be 1,000, but can be reduced to 300. Currently written as a special use permit, but we also discuss the site planner view. There's also the spacing requirement, I think maybe a couple issues are getting mixed up here. Spacing requirement of 750 to the next, between standard boards, or 1,000 feet between animated, and that's existing wording.
So they could still put up a digital within 300 feet of residential? Or no, you said it had to go to 1,000?
1,000 feet through permit, or 300, you could go down to 300 with a, with a special use permit, or site planner view that was discussed earlier.
And that's currently what it is?
No, that part's new. We don't, there is no regu, there's, digitals aren't, aren't allowed right now. Nothing's in there for digitals.
What's not allowed?
Digital boards are not allowed in the city right now.
Well, I understand that, but is a, is a regular billboard?
It's 300.
So we're changing it, that's what I'm saying, we're changing, you know, we're changing what they can do, you know, and saying, okay, now it's 1,000, which you can go down to 300 if you, if you do an SUP.
We're not changing it for static boards. That's staying the same as 300. We haven't changed that. That's still in there.
No, I'm talking about digital. Maybe I'm confused, and obviously, but, Kevin?
If, if I can step in for a second, I, I think what I'm hearing is Doug is saying, current code, current ordinance allows for a board, a static board to be placed within 300 feet, no, yeah, within 300 feet of a residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the street. That's item number B4 on page three of our staff report.
It has to be at least 300 feet.
It has to be at least 300 feet. So I believe what Commissioner Kaufman is talking about is, if it's good enough for a static board, why wouldn't it be good enough for a digital board? In other words, why wouldn't the same spacing be, why would we want to make it 1,000 feet for a digital and 300 for a static? Am I correct, Commissioner Kaufman?
Exactly.
So that's, that's the question. That's actually Commissioner Kaufman's concern, and I think that's for our debate, and that number is for us to decide, and to, as commissioners, in order to be able to support this and move it on to city council, and that's a negotiable number.
I guess the other thing in, which Commissioner Romeo brought up, were the same thing, the north and the west. You know, I, I have a big issue with that. So, and then, I don't have any problem taking it back down to eight seconds either, personally. You know, that's kind of what the industry's asking us. You know, we, we've kind of just thrown a number up in the air. When we put together the report, so, I would have not a problem going to eight seconds And, and then it comes, comes back to the bank. I mean, you know, when the, when the law was passed, we said, again, a limit. Now, now they've developed a bank, you know, and they, they said today, hey, we don't have the places where we can actually put up, up billboards. So, you know, I just have an issue with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Woosley?
Yeah, first I'll start off by saying, you know, this has been a, a long journey with the digital billboards, as far as, in the beginning, trying to decide if we wanted them anywhere in our city beyond where they're already at. And, and then moving forward, you know, I've always believed that digital billboards did have a place in our city, but I always thought where they were going to need to be controlled.
a place in our city, but I always thought where they were going to need to be controlled. And, you know, what they displayed, the flip times, you know, everything we've been discussing. So on that, you know, I always, I did support, or I do support, digital billboards, but I do have some concerns. But I do agree, I think I can support the eight-second flip time. I think that is appropriate. And as far as some of the changes, I do, I can support the expansion to 580 down south. I do have concerns about expansion up north. If going to any of the Cabs or the Nabs, you know, up there, you know that their one, number one issue is dark skies. And I know there might be an argument as far as, well, you know, with the light sensitivity and dimming and all that, they wouldn't have the, as much light as a stagnant billboard. But with the changing of the billboards, that does, you know, it's going to cause some of that, I would say, what they're not looking for. And I know, they call it dark skies, but it is that digital billboards that they are definitely opposed to, at least all of the citizens that I talked to. And so I just really want to tell my fellow commissioners, that is a concern of everybody in North Valley's, a heavily, heavy concern. And I could not support that going all the way up to the 395 interchange there, and keeping it at McCarran. And I always thought, our talk, when we were talking, that we were going to keep it inside the McCarran loop. And then, you know, expanding where we thought may be viable, and I always, always thought about that down south. And I do think it makes sense to expand it down south. So I cannot support that going above the McCarran loop there, and I could see the same argument for out west. So I please ask you to consider that. And I believe, you know, I do have an issue with the eight-to-one with the smaller companies, but I'm trying to figure out a better way to do that. And, you know, trying to do a ratio on what you have banked now versus what you owned. I don't, I haven't figured out a better way to do that. And the whole idea is to reduce, the idea of digital billboards and the eight-to-one ratio was to reduce billboards in our city, and that was very attractive to all of us. And we wanted to keep that. So I support the eight-to-one, but I also, I'm open to suggestions if anybody else has other ideas about how we could manage that for the smaller companies. Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll start with following on what Commissioner Woosley was saying about the limitations, if we choose to do so outside of the McCarran loop. And I want to echo his concerns about the communities up to the north and also to the west. I think those are valid. I think that the council indicated that, too. As far as down south, in terms of folks I know and conversations I've had over the last six months, folks up in Arrow Creek are no, are also have been concerned about the one billboard that's down on South Virginia right now. And so I think the same is true for down south, and I could support to Demone, outside of the McCarran loop, to Demone down south, but not further than that. And I would urge the other commissioners also to be sensitive to going outside of the McCarran loop up north and also west. Digital billboards are brighter, even though it's a new technology, and the citizens out there are sensitive to that. And I think we need to take that into consideration. It's a community issue. It's what those folks want that live out there. In terms of the flip time, I know we all talked about and sort of agreed on 12 seconds last time. I think the conversation went that, as Claudia indicated, she brought it down to eight because that's an industry standard. And I think we need to consider not just what's the industry standard, but what is the, you know, standards of other municipalities across the country. And I think research showed that it went from all-out bans to a minute, to 24 seconds, down to six and eight seconds. I think six and eight seconds is really on the low end, even though that's the industry standard. That's what the industry wants. I really think we need to think about what other cities have done and what the community wants. I would support more towards 12. I would support 10. And as far as the SUP versus a site plan review, it's, as you guys all know, as we all know, this is a controversial issue. It's something that folks in this community care about very much. And I think that it's not a huge price difference between the SUP and the site plan review, but it does require a public meeting, and I think that's important for this issue. So I would support maintaining the 1,000 feet from residential, less than that with an SUP as opposed to a site plan review. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Stapleton. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to let everybody know, since I'm the new commissioner on here, I did take some time during the holidays, since I'm not a big football fan. I spent many, many hours going through previous meetings, listening to this issue. And I know there's a lot of, a lot of things that have been brought up and discussed from all sides, from the community as well. And so I learned a lot more about billboards and digital billboards than I probably ever dreamed of. With that, I guess one of the things is, is there's, we talk about different neighborhoods, different locations, whether it's, you know, North Valleys or the Arrow Creek area, or west, or anything like that. I think there's, there's a value of equity, or not equity, equality, that if you're going to do something in a particular area, that you, you may want to consider doing it and having it throughout the community. And keeping things, and I know there's neighborhood plans and different types of discussions and thoughts that go into that, of, you know, why something's done in a particular area and not done in other areas. So with regard to the, trying to separate whether you allow digital billboards in a particular area and not allow them in a particular area, I find that difficult because it takes away an equality of looking at the community as a whole, and since this is a new ordinance. So with regard to the, that type of discussion, I would like to have something that is equitable across, across the board. And so I support, you know, that we do something that is equal throughout. Following on Commissioner Kaufman's, you know, a digital billboard is new. I don't know that it's a completely untamed animal, but I think it's something that is similar to a new billboard. And looking at the illuminations that are under table 18.6-2, I guess it's the measure of light intensity. I guess illumination isn't the proper terminology. But looking at a, you know, the largest of the boards there, that it's at 250 feet, and putting that back to the, the distance between, in a residential area for, of 300 lineal feet in a residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the street, I see that, you know, 300 feet is, is pretty, is a pretty significant distance when you're looking at the illumination only going 250 feet, and that's on the largest of the boards. And I guess Claudia, I don't quite understand the, I guess I have a better understanding now, but I still don't completely understand the same side of the street type of thing. If you, if you have a billboard and it's an existing billboard, and they're not 1,000, they wouldn't have to be 1,000 feet right now with a static board, correct? If they were on opposite sides of the street?
Correct. It's 300 feet on the same side of the street.
Okay. Are there any, I guess, are there currently any boards that would be on opposite sides of the street that would be less than 1,000 feet from each other?
I'm sure there are somewhere.
Okay. So under this, under, under B4, we would be altering that to say that they could only be on the same side of the street, and they'd have to be at least 1,000 feet apart? Or if they were on opposite sides of the street, they'd have to be at least 1,000 feet apart?
Either side would be 1,000 feet, and you can reduce that down to the 300 in certain instances where you can show that it's appropriate for that case.
Under the, under an SUP?
Correct.
Okay. The eight seconds, I'm fine with that. I like the eight seconds. It's, if that's, and the reason I like that, and I think that it's, and because of the substantiation that came out of Claudia's report, that that is what the highway board has recommended. I think if you go any less, it could be difficult to read. And with regard to the eight-to-one, it puts, it goes back to my, kind of my equal clause of putting somebody at a, that doesn't even have eight signs, allowing them the opportunity, whether there is a magic number or not. What was voted on, what's the 278 as that number is allowed. And with the, with the amount of restrictions that are already put onto this, you can't get to the 278. So I find it very difficult to support the ordinance as written.
I'm sorry, what was the last part that you said?
As written.
As written? Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Romeo? It's your turn.
You sure? All right, I have a number of issues. Let's start with the same side of the street. Well, let's, let's go back even farther. You know, we could change the, Doug's smiling because he knows what I'm going to say. The only reason that we're rewriting an ordinance is because of the lighting issue in the current ordinance. We could change a sentence in the current ordinance that would allow backlit or LED-lit billboards and allow whatever's happening right now, today, to keep right on going with no exchange rate, no regulation for flash time, no other, no other restrictions whatsoever. Is that what I think is the right thing to do? No. But we could. The only reason we're doing this is because billboards have to be lit from outside and reflecting back onto the script. The digitals light from the back with LEDs, and they're, they're putting, putting the message out with lighting out to the front. That's what's driving this. And with all due respect to scenic Nevada, if we do come up with a ratio, it is going to eliminate signs. It's going to eliminate boards. I, with certain changes, I think I could support this. Is the ratio eight-to-one for exchange a little high? I think it is. I might be a little comfortable with six or five, but I'm willing to talk about that. Flip times, I think we all agree on eight seconds is a pretty good flip time, or maybe nine. Again, we could talk about that. But we have, and I, I really like what Boz said about the equal part. You know, they've got boards with, we could go on the way we're going on right now and just say, all right, we're changing the lighting. If you've got a board up on North Virginia, you can replace it with a digital. We're not going to cut down any numbers at all. That's one option that we could do. I don't think that's what our intent is, but that is an option we could do. They are on North Virginia Street. They are out on Interstate 80. They are down south. And I like the idea that, are the citizens in the south less citizens of Reno than the ones in the north in the corridor? Are the ones west going out? They live near a freeway, Interstate 80, 395, north or south. That's where the advertising should be. That's where they want it to be. And I believe I read a statistic that 98% of the advertising that's done on these boards here in town are for local businesses. So it's not the conglomerates from Saudi Arabia or Uzbekistan that are trying to get our money. It's local merchants advertising through local companies on the billboard. I, I could live with the, with the same side of the street recommendation before. I think city has already agreed with the B10 on page four. And again, the north, south, and west. I can't for the life of me wrap my arms around not allowing a board where there is currently a board, where it's legal to put a board right now. And there's no plan in the world that would regulate a business out of business. I don't care what neighborhood plan it is. I don't care what kind of dark skies. This is going to only illuminate point three tenths of one foot candle at 250 feet above ambient light. So when it's dark, it's going to be dark. When it's light, it's going to be brighter. The current boards that are out on North Virginia are illuminated with 2,000 watts of lighting that are glaring back on the board. If you want dark skies and you want the sky to be better and you don't want that glare, doesn't it make more sense to have three or four, or six or five of those things taken out and one digital with six or seven messages on it that goes dimmer at night so you don't have that glaring illumination? I think it does. I think we could take this number down from almost 300, because now with annexation, the number's not 280 or 270, it's 308. You know, with a five-to-one, we can knock that down to 60. You know, if they want to do it, they want to do it. Maybe set a minimum. If you're a company and you only have two boards, you get one. I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to give that concession to a company that may not have the number of boards, you know, if, but I, again, we could do this with one sentence. The only thing that's changing right now is the technology. And we didn't go crazy when cell phone towers came out. We didn't go crazy when other technology came out. We approved a tower 97 feet tall, over a 55-foot maximum today. Why? Because there's technology out there now that can read remote electric meters, and we're allowing that to happen through a variance. I don't, I don't see a problem with this. They're legal, they're a legal business. They're doing business here. We've been hanging them up, and I voted for that thing in 2000. I thought that was a good number, 278 or whatever it was. I thought that was a good number. I didn't want more than that. But if we can cut it down to 60 or 50 or whatever the number is, I'm all in favor of that, too. So I, I like expanding this. I don't think, think we should handcuff the industry. Those are hard work in Nevadas, Nevadans. They live here, too. The advertisers live here and work here and own businesses here. So that's my stand.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. I'm not going to, I mean, I've, I've written down five items that are common amongst us all, and those five items are the issues that we have right now, plus or minus. This, the spacing, excuse me, the North Valley issue and the west issue would be number six and number seven, that, that we need to debate, and we need to try and come to resolution so that we can prepare ourselves to take a vote on this and make a recommendation to council. My concerns are the same as yours. I could go through this for another five minutes, and you guys could hear me say the same thing that the six of you have already, the five of you have already said. The only thing that I would like to point out is, is that, you know, we've been given a lot of information over the last several years regarding this, both from, from scenic Nevada, from the public, and from the industry, from many different companies, how you're affected and how you're, will be affected in the future by it. There was a general ballot question, R1, in 2000 that was voted on, and it was passed by 56% of the people that voted. We have an ordinance that was, that our city council put in place in 2002, which came from that ballot question. And it says that there will be billboards in this town. Doesn't say that we're going to kill an industry. It doesn't say that we're going to reduce the number of billboards. Doesn't, it says that we are not going to add, we have a cap. And as we annex properties in from the county or elsewhere from, everything now has been from the county, that number has increased. But nowhere in any of this ordinance that I have read, and in my conversations with staff and getting guidance from them, does it say that we shouldn't look at a ratio of one-to-one? Because the people voted and said... Because the people voted and said, no more billboards. No more billboards than what existed November 14th, 2000. I specifically asked scenic Nevada several months ago, are you interested in a ratio? As the voice of the people, they said, no. No new billboards. Okay. We had an opportunity to reduce the number. We have an opportunity to reduce the number right now. If scenic Nevada is speaking on behalf of the public, the public said, no, we're okay with the way the law is written right now. So when it comes to a ratio of eight to one, I, I really, four months ago, thought that was, that was great. I mean, I, I'm surprised it got down to eight to one because I know that in my head, I had run some higher numbers. But, but now that I, I see what is before us and what is law and what is ordinance, and we've been asked to support the law. I'm, I mean, the law would be one to one. I do have a problem with, with encroaching into North Valleys and going west into Verde Mogul and Bel Air Ranch. Although I respect Commissioner Romeo's last comments on the lighting. It's, it's an issue that I have asked some questions on. I have had a problem with it and I feel, nobody has brought forward any information of how many foot candles a static sign throws off at night, whether it be up lighting or down lighting. But after driving around at four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, because my job has me doing that, driving around this community and looking at digital billboards, I can tell you there's more glare, in my personal opinion, without an instrument to measure it, coming off a static board, going up into a dark sky, creating light pollution, than what I see driving through sparks or driving south and looking at the digital billboard south of town. So, you know, I, I'm torn there. And my comments today in a meeting with one of the billboard representatives was, if you want to go north and you want to go west and you haven't been to a NAB or a CAB meeting in the last couple of years, maybe you should start it after this new digital billboard is put in place and you should get the community to buy into it. But right now, the community has spoken and said, don't do it in our areas. And, and that's my opinion for going north and going west. And that's respect for the people who have come out and have legitimately expressed their opinion for what they feel and what they felt because they didn't, they didn't have anything to compare it to was going to be brighter than what they have right now. So I would ask that we consider that as a commission in this recommendation before we throw the north and the west into a change as being proposed by Mr. Frankovich and, and industry people, owners this evening. I understand going south because it's an industrial area. Moving it down to the southern, off-ramp is included in an industrial area. It's an area of gaming, it's in, in an area of retail. And if a sign were to go up near residentially zoned property within how many ever feet we decide, an SUP should be warranted. But before we go west and north, I think we should get the communities involved again. With that, I'll ask for any further discussion, or Commissioner Woosley?
Yeah, I wanted to, to add to that. And one thing I wanted to discuss was, you know, when people voted on the billboards, you know, I don't know if digital billboards were a topic at that time. And this is a new technology. And if they were to take that into consideration, would the vote have been the same? We don't know. But since it is a new technology, I think we need to take in consideration handling this new technology and, and maybe, maybe the ratio isn't one to one. And I am, I don't know, open negotiations of reducing the eight to one, but I couldn't support one to one. Because I do think it is a new technology and we need to handle it separately. As far as, you know, we're talking about all areas being created equal and, you know, since we're willing to expand south. And the only reason why I think this is a discussion is because if you look at a map geographically, we've chosen the McCarran Loop as our, as our boundary. Well, that doesn't center Reno. And as, as you look at the business core, it's expanded down south and it's, it's flat in the business corridor going down that. So if you wanted to look at the, kind of the core of the business, it would, it wouldn't be the McCarran Loop, but that was an easy boundary to go by. And that's what we've chosen to, but there's only re, that was why it's easiest to, to look at the south because of that corridor. And so I just wanted to kind of focus on that. And as far as, you know, I don't disagree with the, the comment that there could be more glare and light pollutants from a, a static sign. But I, one thing that keeps in my head, you know, of things being brought up is, let's just say you have your window open and you have a glare coming in and it's constantly changing from pink to green, you know, to, to these multicolors every eight seconds. That's also an distraction, not just looking at the lumens or candlelight, you know, coming off of that sign. So that's something else to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I consider that to be a good point. Like I said, I, I have six or seven items that I've written down that, that we all made comments on that we would like to discuss and, and make changes to the way the ordinance has been proposed to us this evening. I think the best thing to do is, is start at the top of the list that I have and, and work our way through it. Before we do that, Commissioner Kaufman, you'd like to add something?
Yeah, just one comment. And, you know, electronic billboard is still just a billboard. And I, I think because we think it's electronic, you know, and they can change the message, that, that makes it huge, special, or, or whatever. But it's still a billboard. That same vehicle that passes, or a person, or goes by that electronic normally only sees one message by the time that they go by anyways. And it's still just one billboard. I, and I guess that's why I'm really struggling with the ratio.
Okay. Well, let's start with the ratio. Commissioner Stapleton, you want to comment on that? Go ahead.
I do, I do want to comment on that. I think, I just have a couple of comments in response to some of the other commissioners, some things I think we need to keep in mind. Respectfully disagree with Commissioner Kaufman. It is not just a billboard. It is different. It is aesthetically different. It is arguably a little brighter. It is digitized. That is an aesthetic difference. The image can change. And in my mind, it is these, these things that make it different than a static paper billboard. And it, in, it makes, it creates more clutter, more of the elements that the community spoke out that they did not want in the ballot measure. So I think we need to keep that in mind. It is different. You know, however you define that in your own minds, I think we need to think about that. It's aesthetically different, it's digitized, the message changed, so. Also, just to the point of, that Chair Wieski made about scenic Nevada representing the community and that in, in their unwillingness to compromise, I, I really think it's important for us to remember that we are all up here as representatives of the community and we need to keep that in mind. We need to think about what the community wants or, or desires. We all got a lot of emails on this, primarily from community members who are opposed to this. You know, we've heard from some industry people who have a commercial business interest, that's fine, but this is a big issue for the people of this community. And I think, also to Commissioner Kaufman's point, that saying the community voted, that they want the existing number of signs, that is debatable. That is what we have been debating about this entire time. When that ballot measure passed, we don't know what, what was in voters' minds and the language didn't make it clear. Were they saying they don't want billboards, period? Or were they saying they don't want more over that number? We don't know. You know, I think a percentage of them, you absolutely could say, don't want any more billboards. And I think that that is a strong sentiment in this community. And I think it is our responsibility as representatives of the community to keep that in mind.
I'm going to chime in. I don't think we're providing anymore. There's 278 billboards, November 14th, 2000. We're not exceeding that number unless annexation has brought more billboards in. So I, I don't think we are increasing it. But that's not the debate. Let's, let's start with ratios. Right now, we have a recommendation or a, a written line in our proposed ordinance that says eight to one. Do we have anybody willing to offer what their opinion is? Commissioner Woosley?
So obviously, I think I decided, I don't know, a while back that I was going to support digital billboards, but with the idea that, like I said, we controlled where they went and it would ultimately reduce the number of billboards in town. And that was attractive to many people. And I could, I could support a reduction from eight to one, but I, I don't know if I could go any lower than four. Probably six would be my recommendation. So I just wanted to get the ball rolling there.
So how about you pick one number?
Well, let's start with four, four to one.
Okay. We'll start with four. Commissioner Kaufman?
I, you know, I'd like to know the reasoning for it. Why, why four to one? Why not one to one? I mean, I, I still can't get that through because, again, the referendum was a cap and now we're saying, we're going to eliminate them. You know, eliminate part of those, those billboards. And they have part of them been eliminated, only based upon what they did with the train, trench, so.
Commissioner Romeo?
Yeah, let me, let me try something here, Doug. I think, and Jason, I, I think four is a good number, personally. I like the four to one ratio. But I think the ratio's coming into being because a standard board has one face on it, so you can sell it to one advertiser for a month or two weeks or three months or whatever. So you've got one source of income there. When you can create multiple ad, sell to multiple advertisers, I think that's why the ratio is palatable to the industry. You know, is a billboard a billboard? They're billboards. It is a new technology, of course it is, but I think four to one in my mind would be a, a reasonable exchange ratio with the technology available.
Commissioner Harris?
I have read this a couple of different ways and, and looked at it. I like the one to one. A billboard is a billboard. And, and I, I hear the conversation of eight to one, four to one, that you can put multiple displays on, that you can have, you know, different, different messages and those kinds of things. But I think the comment that, that originally came up was at the very beginning of this, before we even started going into this, is, is it a structure or a billboard? And you can have two faces on that structure. You can't have more than two faces on that structure. But, and a billboard is a billboard and whether it's static or digital. So I support the one to one.
Okay. We have recommendation for four to one and we have a recommendation for one to one. Discussion. Commissioner Kaufman?
I guess the other thing to look at is if we're talking about electronic billboards, and, and you look at the, the cost, number one, to put one up, and the industry says that 450 to half a million dollars. You know, I think, I think we're almost kidding ourselves if we think that they're going to put up a ton of electronic billboards and they, they go from, if they have to take down four, so they lose that income, they're going to put up one and gain two more advertisers. And that's going to pay for, for, you know, that expense. They're not, I mean, I mean, that, you know, and that's a financial. I know we're not really supposed to look at it, but that's, you know, that's the basics of it. So, you know, I, I think you have to look at what, what it's going to do to the industry.
Fair enough. Commissioner Romeo?
Did you? I'm, I'm thinking, well, I, okay. If we, I'm going to go back to my original statement, that we could change the ordinance by changing one sentence in the ordinance to allow the lighting that an LED creates. Keep the same separation, the same zoning, the same everything. And then we wouldn't be talking about ratios. Because if we're talking about one to one right now, all we're talking about is changing the way those things are lit, either front or back. And we could do that simply with one sentence in the ordinance. So if that's, if that's the way we're going to go, I, I think I'm leaning towards supporting the one to one ratio. And we could simplify this ordinance tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Romeo. Thank you. Do you mind if I jump in real quick? Claudia, do you agree with Commissioner Romeo's statement that it could be changed that easily because everything else remains the same? I, I feel there's more in, in our digital billboard ordinance than just backlit versus a frontlit static.
You could, you could just make that one change, but you would have no regulations on spacing, location, lumens.
Well, there are.
Anything else.
The spacing's already there in the ordinance. All I'm saying is the way that the billboards are lit, we could change, we could change that. That would, that would take care of it.
Correct. Do it allow it to have videos playing on it? You could allow lumens.
Not arguing, not arguing that point whatsoever.
I'm just, I'm just explaining what, what the consequences would be.
But that would make them legal and, and that would be an ordinance. And then we'd be talking about no animated, no whatever in flip times and we wouldn't be dealing with the rest, with the rest of this.
And I disagree with that, Commissioner Romeo. And I, I believe that we have a lot of other important information that, that we have in paragraphs in this proposed ordinance that need to go along with digital billboards. They are a different animal than a static board and they need to be treated and, and can, and dealt with differently. I realize it, conceptually on the surface, it seems the same, but, but there are a lot of other differences. I, I wouldn't go along with that necessarily. I, I think that we've got a good proposed ordinance with, with some minor changes to be made to send a recommendation out. Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll weigh in on the, the ratio. And I just want to sort of take it back to the bigger picture and to remind the commission that when we initially started this conversation, the idea of the ratio is, you know, that for every, you know, however many you take down, you can only put up one. The goal is to reduce the overall number. And I, I don't know if I made myself clear what I said before about the intent of the ballot question and in disagreeing with Commissioner Kaufman on, that he said people wanted no more billboards. I don't think we can say that we know for sure that that's how people voted, that they wanted no more. I think a lot of people, when they made that vote, voted for no billboards. I think a lot of people, when they made that vote, voted for no billboards, that they wanted less to none billboards. So I don't think we can say with certainty that that ballot question decision that the majority of voters in Reno voted on meant that they wanted no more than the number of billboards that were currently in existence. I think that we've been debating that the whole time. I think there's no way that we can say that that was the intent of the voters because that's not exactly what the language said. I think when a lot of people voted on that, they wanted less to no billboards. And I think that's the truth. I think that's what the community wants. So I think the intent of the ratio of how many you take down, you know, to get credit for how many you can put up, is important because I think the community wants less. They want to decrease. So I'm not in favor at all of a one to one ratio. I would like to see a higher ratio than a four to one.
Commissioner Wysski?
Yes, Commissioner Stapleton.
Tell me who ever told us they wanted an eight to one ratio. Nobody has. No, there hasn't been a vote. There hasn't been somebody, you know. And you're assuming the same, what you're saying I'm assuming. The bottom line comes down to, we're sitting here trying to make a decision of what we think is right. You know, there's, and I have to agree with Commissioner Romeo. I mean, in all honesty, we could put in digital billboards in the ordinance a lot. Do I think that that's the right thing to do? No, I don't. Because as I agree with Claudia, there are some things that are difference about it. But, you know, this ratio thing, I think,'s got, all of us looked at it initially that, you know, hey, it's a good thing to take down some billboards. The problem is, there's no equal way to do that with all the advertisers that are here in the city. So if you're taking down, you know, an eight for one for one company who's already got 40 of the billboards bank, that's a lot different than taking down eight for another, who only has seven. So that's where, that ratio cannot be a fair number to whoever owns those companies.
Claudia?
It's sounding like maybe we're not gonna get an agreement here on this topic and maybe some other ones. If you can narrow it down to a certain number of items, and if you can outline what your options, what options you would be comfortable with, somebody, some might be okay with one to one, some might be okay with four to one, eight to one, whatever it is, I'll be happy to bring that forward to City Council if you want to move it forward to City Council at this time. And I can bring it forward that, if my math is right here, three would be in favor of one to one, two people in favor of four to one, one person in favor of eight to one. And I can bring that, those numbers to City Council to show that there's definitely concern and disagreement on those issues. And I can bring that forward to City Council so that we can, if planning commission is in agreement on the rest of the ordinance, if you want to pull out those four or five items that you can't agree on, and I can outline what the concerns are, what the ideas were, and I can put that into a staff report and outline it in the draft ordinance, and I can move that to City Council if you so choose.
What do you guys think? Is that fair and reasonable? Would you like to do it that way? Or would you like to arm wrestle to come up with a specific number? Speak into the mic, somebody, everybody.
I'm in favor of that. I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Give them some options.
Commissioner Woosley?
I'm in favor of that because I feel that if we voted now, we wouldn't come to a decision and they wouldn't get anything of value.
Okay. Commissioner Kaufman, I kinda know where you stand. But you want to chime in? Go ahead.
No, I agree with that, too. I mean, and I think that's part of, you know, this decision is, it's gonna go to the City Council anyways. And it'd be great to have some feedback to know exactly, you know, what direction they would like to go also.
Okay. Commissioner Harris, you okay with that?
I like the idea of that. But I think, much like the citizens, we're representing the citizens. And in a way, we're also offering recommendations to the council. So I think we need to be somewhat definitive. But we're obviously at a very difficult point right now and not coming to agreement. So if it's an alternative to allow them some options to look at, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Commissioner Romeo, you okay with that?
No. I think we should keep banging this through. It's only 9:30. We've been dealing, well, you know, honestly, we've been dealing with this for years and, you know.
If we come to a standstill and we can't all come to consensus on what that number is for that ratio, then I agree with Claudia's recommendation that she takes what we do want for ratios and with a vote attached to it to City Council and let City Council make that final decision. I assure you, they're gonna be modifying some of these numbers to be.
They're gonna modify it anyway, but it.
At least we can give them what our input is. I mean, they've asked for a recommendation. It doesn't say it has to be a unanimous recommendation. We couldn't come to a unanimous decision. Here's what we could come to.
And I think we need to come to those items that we do agree on and then work on the ones that we don't. And if four of us think that a four to one ratio would work, then it would be recommended that it would be a four to one ratio. That's four out of six.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I mean, I'm just saying that's.
I tell you what, then, let's move on from the ratio right now of eight to one. We will come back to it. Let's try another one. Let's try flip times of eight seconds. I'll start. I am in favor of eight-second flips. I believe that's also what NDOT uses.
Man, I'm fine with that, too.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Stapleton?
I'm okay with eight seconds as well.
I think eight seconds is the minimum that the highway standard is. So I would rather see higher, but if that's, if everyone's in agreement with eight, I can go with eight.
Okay. Commissioner Kaufman?
I'd be in favor of eight seconds.
Commissioner Woosley?
I can be in favor of eight seconds.
All right, one down. There we go, eight seconds, Claudia. All right. Distance to a residence. That's item B4 on page three. No permanent off-premise digital display shall be erected within 1,000 feet, millennial feet, of a primary or secondary school classroom building or a residentially zoned and used parcel without the approval of a special use permit. The 1,000 feet is what we should be discussing. Commissioner Woosley?
I can agree with that as written.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I disagree, and only because of how it's written today, with the 300 feet from residence. So I'd rather see it at 300 for residence.
Commissioner Stapleton, would you like to?
Yes, if you're calling on me, I'll weigh in. I agree with it as written.
As written? Commissioner Harris? An opinion?
I'd like to stay at the 300 feet. I mean, I can understand that the 1,000 feet with the schools, with the new language. So I'm okay with it as written.
Okay. Commissioner Romeo?
Yeah, I'll buy that. I think it's okay.
The way it's written? Okay. Personally, I think 300 feet is too close. Only because, as we've discussed, the light coming off of a digital display may be, or may be more, maybe less, light. But the color transition, I think, is an influence to a residence. Schools, I'm not as concerned with. I think the 300 feet is fine because most schools that are gonna, students that are gonna be entertained by a digital display will not be around them at night. So during the day, I don't think it will affect their learning curve. But I, you know, I think 1,000 feet is too far. And I sat down with Claudia last week and we looked at a map and did some distance lines between a billboard and specific building locations. And, you know, I could very easily drop that 1,000 feet number down to 750, maybe even to 600 feet compared to what I saw. But, you know, I'm not set on it. That's just my opinion. You know, 1,000 feet, you're not, you're definitely not gonna influence a residence or a school if there's students at that school. And I'm not trying to shorten it up. I'm just, you know, I just think that's a little, a little long. If you guys say right now 1,000 feet is majority, I'll go with 1,000 feet, which is what I see. Commissioner Kaufman, would you entertain an idea to adjust your opinion? Or would you like to stay with it?
For residential, is that all you're talking about?
For residential and school. I mean, it can be approved for less with a special use permit.
Well, you know, I understand that. The only thing is, you know, that's a process which we don't have today, you know, for them. I mean, basically, they can go 300 feet. I don't know. I could probably go 500 to 700 feet, you know, whatever that comes out. I just, I just don't think, I think 1,000 feet is a long ways from the 300, so.
From those who like 1,000 feet, would you give your opinion on whether or not you will be, would be interested in dropping it down to less than that? Anybody? Commissioner Woosley?
So I agree with you when it comes to schools. And it's a very good point about nighttime and the illumination. But if we're lumping schools and residential together, then, you know, I might have to stick with the 1,000 feet. But if, you know, we were separating, that might be a different story because I do agree with you on the schools. But if it's for both, I need to stay at 1,000.
Okay. Commissioner Stapleton?
I would second that. I'm firm on the 1,000 for residential. Could be flexible on schools.
Commissioner Harris?
As much as I, you know, would like things to stay the same as the billboards, I mean, a billboard is a billboard, and I realize that it's new technology. I can see a little bit of reasoning for the 1,000 feet, especially with schools. And I guess a reason we bring up the nighttime effect of those kinds of things. I think students can be, you know, educational facilities can be influenced by a variety of things and be distracted and become a topic of conversation and those kinds of things and brought in. And so with the schools, I don't see, I like the 1,000 feet. You know, residential, I think there's gonna be a lot of times where it's not even gonna affect. And it could be a much lower area. But as it's written, I think that this is, you know, if you want to do something and it's gotta be in a different area and relocate it, it's a difficult process. You go through the special use permit. So I'm okay with that as it is.
Okay. I have a suggestion. And I just conferred with Claudia real quickly, and we can do this. We can split this and designate 1,000 feet for schools. And we can have a different number for residential zoning, which would be lower. And that's just an idea. Commissioner Stapleton, you'll first.
I'm firm on the 1,000 feet for residential. To me, that's probably the most important impact of the signs as a whole is on residential. I think that's probably the biggest concern of folks in the community. So I'm firm on 1,000 feet for residential.
Okay. Commissioner Romeo?
Yeah, could, could we just eliminate where, on page three, B4, where it says, "No permanent off-premise digital display shall be erected within 1,000 millennial feet of a primary or secondary school." Can't we just stop it right there?
Well, if you do that, then what are you gonna use for residential adjacency?
It says, "No permanent off-premise advertising display shall be erected within 300 millennial feet of a residentially zoned parcel." That's right above it.
Okay.
So we've got 300 feet on a residentially zoned parcel and 1,000 feet for a school. What's wrong, I mean, doesn't that solve both problems?
Well, no, because the biggest concern is, you know, these digital boards expressing light into residence.
But that's what it says right here.
So you're gonna move them with, you're gonna allow them within 300 feet? Or up to 300 feet of a residence?
Within 300, yeah. It's right there. "No permanent off-premise advertising display shall be erected within 300 millennial feet of a residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the street."
You're gonna put a digital board 301 feet away from a residence?
Well, that's what it says here. We're not, we're only arguing about the 1,000 feet for the school. I'm saying it's already in there. If you look at page three, B4, it's already there.
Okay.
I'm not changing that. I'm just saying eliminate it where, "No permanent off-premise display shall be erected within 1,000 millennial feet of a primary or secondary school." And eliminate the rest of that.
Claudia, are we reading that right?
That would, if you ended it there, then it would go to, it would only require 300 feet from residentially zoned property.
Exactly.
For standard.
Which is what we.
I think you need to clarify that. If you are going to change, because all the way through the structure of the ordinance is that you put digital billboards separately. You do a separate description of them. So if you want to say, and then you would add the 300 feet to the digital, or the digital billboards down below so that it's clear.
Okay, because that's the way I was reading it also, Marilyn. Correct me if I'm wrong. The first part of number four, that is not highlighted in yellow in our staff report, is for a static sign. The second part, which is highlighted.
Right, but the way the whole thing is structured is that you're writing for static signs, and then you're writing for digital signs. And so it's better to just clarify it rather than have a misunderstanding. If that's what you want to do, I mean, you can do it that way.
All right. So would somebody like, Commissioner Romeo, since you brought this up, read the way you are proposing item number B4.
All right, if we're gonna change it that way. "No permanent off-premise advertising display shall be erected within 300 millennial feet of a residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the street. No permanent off-premise digital display shall be erected within 1,000 millennial feet of a primary or secondary school classroom or 300 feet from a residentially zoned and used parcel without the approval of a special use permit."
Okay. So everybody understand what Commissioner Romeo just proposed? Hold on, okay, we'll take a second and. Hold on, okay, we'll take a second and...
I think by his wording through a special use permit, you could eliminate any setback from residential.
And we'd just take out the special use permit part?
So then there would be no setback for digital to residential?
300 feet. So I said put the 300 feet in.
He's, what he's doing in the one, two, three, fourth line down starts, "Or secondary school classroom building or 300 feet within a residentially zoned and used parcel without approval, the approval of a special use permit."
Hmm?
Right? Am I correct?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Romeo, I'm not trying to put, that's why I have it written. I didn't wanna put words in your mouth.
It's 300 feet residential, 1,000 feet from a school. Right now...
Okay. I understand what you're saying, but that's not the wording that you just proposed. The wording you just proposed is that you could eliminate the setback altogether through a special use permit. I don't think that's what you're intending, but that's that. We can write it...
Trying to use the same 300, 300, and 1,000 feet from a school. That's what I'm, what's, that's what my intent is to rewrite this.
So I think you wanna remove the special use permit requirement then?
Do you wanna remove the special use permit?
Yeah, we won't need it, 'cause we'll have it defined as 1,000 feet from a school and 300 feet from residentially zoned.
Commissioner Wisley?
I just wanted to kinda go over, I, I believe the intent of several commissioners was the opposite, to have it farther away from residential than schools. And I just wanted to bring that back up to make sure we brought that to the front.
Well, that's, that's why I'm, I'd like to work on this in two parts. Right now, it looks like we all agree on the 1,000 feet from...
School.
A school, secondary classroom. Am I, I have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses. So Claudia, 1,000 feet from a secondary school classroom building. A primary or secondary school classroom building. Okay?
With any exceptions for a special use permit?
Do we wanna allow for an SUP for closer? Yes. Yes. With an SUP.
Down to what amount?
300?
Commissioner Stapleton, go ahead.
300?
300. Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, that...
300?
That can be up to 300.
Okay. Yep, I've got six yeses for that.
So down to...
Down to 300.
So there always has to be 1,000 feet. You can get a special use permit to go down to 300.
Yes.
With a special use permit.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So schools and classrooms are done.
Okay.
Okay? Now residences. We have 1,000 feet is what is being recommended and proposed by a couple of commissioners. I have said less than that. We have a couple of commissioners who are saying 300 feet, but they may be willing to come up a little bit. I'd like to kinda split the difference and propose 750 feet.
Why, why can't we, if we're gonna do that special use permit on the schools, why don't we do the same with residential then? If that's the case?
Is that what you had written?
Well, I know, but if, but if we already did that, that's a...
You know what?
You know?
It's a circular exercise, but if we get, come around to it and we can all agree on it and we can make that recommendation, I don't care how we get there.
I mean, and then, then we don't have to worry about whether it's 500 or 750 or...
That's fine. So how about if we leave it as is? Now, 1,000 foot spacing for the same side of the street. Commissioner Romeo, your opinion on that, please?
The same side of the street as opposed to both sides of the street?
Correct.
You mean adding that place?
That's...
Correct. Mr. Frankovich requested that on that same number four, you add on the same side of the street.
And I agree, I agree with that. I think it should be on the same side of the street. I don't think it's fair and equitable to compare something on the southbound to something on the northbound for spacing. So I would be more inclined to stay on the same side of the street as far as measuring distances.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I agree with Commissioner Romeo.
I pass.
Okay, that's fine. Commissioner Harris?
Do, would you need clarification? That's fine.
I'm sorry, I don't really understand.
Okay, and I, I'm happy to explain that one.
And I know you explained it to me before.
No, it's fine. So if, let me go down and use the overhead.
Thank you.
If everyone understands, this is not the end of the world issue for me, so...
No, it's better that we all understand where we're going and so this is fine.
You're not allowed to pass.
I guess not.
Okay.
This is my fine Cal Poly design major skills. So here's your house. Same setting. 1,000 feet on the same side of the street, so your sign would be here. So it's only regulating this space. It's not regulating over here. So you could have the sign over here. Staff kept it on both sides, 'cause we felt that this was just as visible as that from the residence.
So shouldn't it be equilinear, is that a word? 1,000 feet in any direction from residential or school? So, so does that mean you could have it directly? If it says only on the same side of the street, does that mean you could have it directly across the street and there's no regulation?
Correct.
Oh, I'm not okay with that. I think it should be 1,000 feet from the edge of the parcel, you know? I mean, 'cause that's pretty arbitrary, same side of the street. If you're gonna have it, if it's 50 feet to cross the street and then, I don't think, I think that, that sort of removes the intent of what we're trying to do.
And staff with, they, staff felt that it was equally visible on either side of the street. It didn't make a difference, so we would...
Does that, does that make sense to other commissioners, what I'm saying?
Yeah, but it, Commissioner Kaufman, but when you have traffic, you're not gonna look in your rearview mirror to see the one on the other side of the street or a sideview mirror. I mean, you know, that's how it's written today, same side of the street. It's measured from the same side.
But I think, sorry, Commissioner Stapleton, we're talking about the effect of the lighting, so not necessarily the person who can or can't see the message, but the effect of the brightness or lighting of that on 1,000 feet from in any direction?
Claudia, I have a question for you.
Yes.
If this were to change and go on the same side of the street as proposed by Clear Channel, you'd still have your spacing that we just got done discussing for spacing to residential and spacing to school, primary schools, no?
That's where Mr., gosh, that's really loud. That's where Mr. Frankovich requested to add that wording in.
Okay.
Is in that exact sentence.
Is in that exact sentence?
Yes.
But you'd still have the same, same spacing requirements. If, in other words, if you put a, a sign on one side of the street, to put a sign on the other side, it'd have to have the same spacing requirements to residential or a school.
The way staff has written it, the way Mr. Frankovich has requested, is that it would only be on one, the same side of the street.
This, this is spacing. That would eliminate spacing across the street.
Yeah. I disagree with this proposed change. I mean, that's just my opinion, because we're gonna lose our spacing.
Well, I think, I think though, if you do that, you're, you're compounding the spacing. 'Cause if you've got a board advertising to the south, you're visible to the south. You're not visible to the north. But yet you're making them space another, another display away from that on the other side of the street, so you can't display to the north.
The signs could be double-faced, so they would be visible from both directions.
Well, and if they're double-faced, then you, you'll have the spacing. It won't, but you're not gonna put another one on the same side. You've already got advertising there. But the prob, the problem I see it is, is if you put one advertising to the north on Virginia Street, you can't put one, you've got not 1,000 feet, you've got 2,000 feet going one way and the other way, where you can't put a board facing the opposite direction to advertise. So you're not just penalizing the distance that you say it is, you're actually doubling that distance, because you're using both directions on both sides. So that's why I, I think it should be same side of the street.
Wait.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Wait. I think with the language that says on the same side of the street, it does what you're saying, Dennis. I think that that language means, what that language intends, correct me if I'm wrong, Claudia, is on the same side of the street, 1,000 feet in either direction. But what it, but if you put on the same side of the street in there, then it takes away any limitation on spacing on the opposite side of the street. Did that make sense? Am I interpreting that?
You're correct.
Well, no, it dou, it doubles the spacing on the other side of the street. It does, yes, it does. If you've got a sign here and you got 1,000 feet in either direction, if you've got one on this side of the street, you can't put one over here for 1,000 feet that way and 1,000 feet that way. That's the separation, because it's both sides of the street. That's why we only want the measurement on one side of the street. Am I missing something here or am I, my, it's not 1,000 feet, it's 2,000, 'cause it's from wherever the board is, either way, on the other side of the street. Pretty simple. You're taking away their ability to do that. What do you mean, no?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. I, I just wanna make sure that we're both clear on what you're saying.
Claudia, could you just draw a, a circle, fictitious circle around one side and that would be 1,000 foot radius? And that would, wouldn't that clear it up? Wouldn't that be...
No, we don't want that, 'cause then you got streets going kitsky in Virginia in different areas where you draw 1,000 foot circle.
Yeah, but it'll start affecting parcels on other sides of blocks, which I don't think is the intent.
So if you have, if this is your road, you have your house here, your residential zoning here, you'd have to go 1,000 feet to have a sign here, sorry, 1,000 feet here, but you could have one directly across the street.
If it's only on one side, if you're only using separation on one side.
Well, yeah, if you, as long as you're using separation on one side...
Well, that's what I'm, that's, well, it's the same side of the street.
You could do the spacing on, on the opposite side of the street or where the, in that diagram where the residential structure is shown, you could have a, a sign 140-some feet across or whatever, 40 feet across the street, because that's 1,000 foot spacing on the opposite side of the street. See that?
If we add this language, then what Kevin said is true.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kaufman?
If the, the sign on the right side, it still has to be 1,000 feet from the residential, right?
Only as staff has proposed it, not by Mr. Frankovich's request. If you add, if you add in the same side of the street as requested by Clear Channel, then that would not be true. It could be directly across the street.
But it would still have to be over 1,000 feet from residential. Isn't that what we're saying? Those guidelines that we just agreed on is that, that a digital sign has to be 1,000 feet from residential.
If that's the intent, then you don't wanna add in on the same side of the street.
I would think we would, it does, I mean, that's an addition. Let's see, how do I wanna say that? Is, are we only talking about adding this to the residential?
Just that one, the number four, I think it is. I didn't grab my...
All this, it's just number four.
Just number four. Just adding it to that. That's the only thing they've requested.
Doug, that's on page three.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I thought it was page four here. Page four, 12B.
No, he's, he's, the, on the memo from Mr. Frankovich, it's paragraph four of B, paragraph B, prohibited location on page two.
Yeah, but I...
See, the way, the way that the, the way that, that it's written right now, it does what we're talking about and eliminates a sign less than 1,000 feet from a residence if it's across the street. The way it's being proposed opens up the other side of the street and doesn't leave that 1,000 foot spacing.
So it would just be the width of the street?
So it would just be the width of the street, whatever the street width is. And that, that's...
It would still be within 1,000 feet at the school.
Then, the way I understand it, it's that the measurement is on the same side of the street. If you cross the street and you go 90, in a 90-degree angle, then you're starting to get into a radius and you lose your 1,000 foot of separation. You've crossed over the street. Now you start your 1,000 feet again. See, that's where we don't, and we don't wanna say, you know, 300 feet or 1,000 feet in any given direction, because then we get into this radius thing and we're, we're going where we don't wanna go.
First, I didn't understand it, now I messed everybody up.
I'm glad you answered, asked the question. I'd rather you all have a good understanding of it, so we can move it forward properly.
So we'd have to have the perfect storm for that scenario. That residence would have to be across the street from a parcel that was zoned to be able to put up a off-site advertising board.
And that could happen on Mr. Frankovich's corner of Cassaza and Wells. And his, in his...
Then it still should be on the same side. I don't have a problem with it. I don't, but...
Okay, so Commissioner Stapleton, are you, do you understand better?
I under, I understand that if we add this language, then across the street from residential, which is however many feet, 100, you could have a sign. And I am opposed to that. I would like to leave this as is and not accept the change that Mr. Frankovich proposed.
Any other comments, discussion? Commissioner Kaufman, you'd still, you disagree? Commissioner Wisley?
I also would like to keep it as is and not change the, to the new suggested amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Harris, you've been quiet.
I think it becomes very difficult to, to substantiate this. And I'm not even sure that the language would read correctly, and maybe I'm missing something that, that, of how this would work if it stays, if we add in on the same side of the street. I think it probably has to be completely reworded to clarify this.
But if you can give me the intent of what you want, we will, we will put the appropriate wording together to move it forward to counsel.
I'm trying to think of that. Trying to visualize it first.
Commissioner Romeo?
Yeah, I have a question for Commissioner Wisley. I didn't understand what you, what you commented on. Did you say you wanted this to stay out or did you want the modification?
I do not want the modification. I want to keep it as is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Tell you what, let's, it's 10, it's 10:10. Let's take a five-minute break, give Commissioner Harris opportunity to think about it, what he'd like to propose, and, and come back at 10:15.
15, let's re-adjourn this meeting and get going. Re-adjourn. Commissioner Romeo, would you?
One more time, please, for my benefit, reconfirm what your idea is of the dimensions of, of 1,000 feet on the same side of the street.
I was just doing that and Claudia said I can't. No, I, what I'm saying.
Do it now because you're on record.
What I'm saying is I want, I don't think it should be both sides of the street. I think it should be one side of the street. If you've got, got an issue 1,000 feet up and down on the west side of the street, it shouldn't affect the east side of the street. If you have a board facing advertising north, you could have one theoretically across the street facing south. I don't think there should be, and it's not just 1,000 feet from there, it's 2,000 feet because you've got 1,000 feet at north and 1,000 feet south. So that's why I, I think that the one side of the street issue is important. But, you know, I don't, I, that's just my guess. I would like to see, see Mr. Frankovich, who's, who proposed this, to explain it to me so maybe I can understand it.
Would you please give us a description of how your proposed change would work and why?
The proposed change that, that I made, I think, and it's been correctly represented by Claudia, would fit in that sentence about 1,000 lineal feet from a primary school or residential on the same side of the street. That's where it would go. That's the existing law right now on a statics. We measure it on the same side of the street. So to answer one of the questions that came up right now, if there's a residentially zoned piece of property on the west side, you can put a billboard right across the street, on the east side of the street, a static one. We thought the same law ought to apply to digitals as applied to static. And that's why we proposed this in the ordinance. This does not eliminate the requirements that you still have to have 1,000 feet from another digital billboard. I mean, those are not measured on the same side of, of the street. This is one that's just specially addressed to schools and residential property. You, you'd still have to, I mean, you couldn't put one, let's suppose it was 300 feet and the spacing between digitals is 1,000 feet. You couldn't put one 300 feet on either side of the residential because you'd still have to meet your 1,000-feet spacing. I think most of the comments that you made, if you put them all together, are a correct interpretation of this, but I, I think you basically disagree on whether or not there should be a limitation of 1,000 feet on both sides of the street. We had this discussion 10 years ago about the radius, as to whether it should be a radius when we developed this ordinance. And the reason the radius concept was rejected is you can go, you can't find very many roads in Reno, Nevada where you can draw a 1,000-foot radius and not run into a residential piece of property, which means you couldn't have billboards anywhere under that. And that was not the intent. They wanted, plus the other factor, why they allowed them across the street? They're only allowed on major roads as it is. So if somebody's living on a major road, they're already have lighting on the road, they have the traffic and the noise, billboard across the street did not have that great of impact, at least that was the belief when this ordinance was adopted 10 years ago.
Thank you very much. Does that help answer that? Does anybody have, does anybody have an opinion, other, I mean, a different opinion now that we have discussed it, we have, have a better understanding of what this proposed change by Mr. Frankovich is?
I.
Commissioner Kaufman?
And I guess this is kind of to Claudia. Could we add something like, that would say, "But no sign will be closer than 1,000 feet from a school or residential on either side of the road?"
That's the way I wrote it. That's the draft ordinance.
Huh?
That's the draft ordinance, as it's, as worded, as-is.
But it doesn't eliminate if there's not a school or residence around, right? So in other words, could you still put an example on the freeway on 395? Or let's take South Virginia. Could you, you put a sign on one side of the street and a sign on the other? Or would they have to be 1,000 feet apart?
You still have the separation. On page five E, letter E, "No animated off-prem advertising displays shall be located closer than 1,000 feet to the next animated on either side of the same street." So that, and that's existing wording. So you couldn't have it from each other, but you could have it across the street.
In today's ordinance, could they be across from each other?
No.
Huh?
No.
They have to be 750 feet?
Correct.
Marilyn, you can?
Well, yeah, we would recommend that you call on Lori Ray, just to give some equal time to some earlier comments made.
Okay. Lori?
I just wanted to correct what Mr. Frankovich.
I have called one person to the podium and one person only. Thank you.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Ray with Teneck, Nevada. Mr. Frankovich said, mentioned something about, I can't really recall the exact words, but residences aren't going to be on the roads where the digital billboards are going to be. And I just wanted to point out to the commission that you have an MU zone on South Virginia Street. You're trying to encourage residential development. In fact, isn't, Claudia, can you help me with, what is the ratio of units per, you know, per mile or whatever on those, those places? We're trying to increase residences there. If you allow digital billboards and you only have the, on one side of the street requirement, you might have, you know, a problem with that because you really are going to have people living on South, hopefully, people living on South Virginia Street to encourage the work, live, shop whole situation. And there's other places in town where residences and large streets, you know, people are near large streets, and I'm thinking right now is the University Farms parcel, you're looking at, changing that to a commercial. That can go be a new space for digital billboards. There's a lot of open space, wildlife, and there are residences out there. And they're going to affect the people that live there, and you're, it's going to be a problem. So what Commissioner Stapleton was saying and what Commissioner Woosley was saying was, you know, the same thing about the flashing and the colors, it's a totally different animal than a static board. And again, the light is, comes out and it's not directed to the board, it comes out. So I think that, you know, that's what you ought to consider when you consider which side of the street or if not both.
Thank you.
Okay. And Lori, to address that, I believe, that's what Claudia was saying on page five E, that that helps address that spacing. Am I correct, Claudia? I mean.
It's the spacing from each, from one sign to another sign, not from residential. The spacing from residential is addressed under, on page three, B4.
So if, in, in Lori's example, Claudia, let's say on the corner of, I believe it's Cheney in South Virginia, there is an apartment complex there. And so if that apartment complex is there in an MU, does this 1,000-foot spacing in B4 apply to that?
No.
So it doesn't apply to any of them in a Todd corridor?
Correct. Although, when determining where billboards can go, we use the zoning that was previously in place, previous to the adoption of the Todd. So when the Todd came in, we went from CCAC, MF30, whatever it was, to M, to MU. We determine, in another section of, of the ordinance, it states that where the billboards go is based on the zoning in place prior to the Todd or the regional center. But that's, that same wording is not in place for spacing from residential.
Okay. So whether the proposed change to B4 is made has nothing to do with Todd corridor, let's say, that was, is being used as an example right now?
I understand your question, I'm sorry.
Well, the, the spacing of, of 1,000 feet does not apply on South Virginia.
Correct. That's correct.
Period.
Correct.
Lori, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Didn't you, didn't, weren't we here before and we, you put billboards back into the Todds if they had commercial under, you know, there was a commercial zone and then the MU's were overlaying?
Well, it doesn't ever, essentially, yes, it's not exactly the structure, but correct.
So, you know, we've got residences going in there and we can have digital billboards there?
That's correct.
Okay. So, is that what you just said?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So, so you can have billboards there. You can have static billboards, and if this ordinance is passed.
You can have digitals.
You can have digitals also.
And they're going to be there and they're going to be, it's, they're going to be there side by side with residential parcels?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Stapleton?
So did we decide on the whether we want billboards across the street from residential or not?
Claudia, would you like to answer that?
On whether you decided or not? I would say, I would say no would be the answer.
We decide, but.
I, I've heard both answers. I, I haven't heard a definitive of whether we.
The question before us right now is, do we accept the proposed change as proposed by Mr. Frankovich to the same side of the street, or do we leave it as staff has written it in the book? Commissioner Stapleton?
I guess that's what I was asking, sorry. I, my, I have the same, I'm of the same opinion that the wording suggested by Mr. Frankovich, as we now understand, would change the ordinance as written to allow billboards directly across the street from residential. I'm in opposition of that. I think the 1,000-foot spacing should apply across the street also, so I think we should leave the language as-is.
Commissioner Kaufman?
So, in the old ordinance, it was the same side of the street. Is that correct for schools?
Schools weren't in the old ordinance. I believe we're talking about residential.
Residential, okay, residential or, but same side of the street was there.
The, it, the first sentence is the existing wording. "No permit off-premises advertising displays shall be erected within 300 lineal feet of a residentially zoned parcel on the same side of the street."
So, I'm going to make one point here. It's another, another point for the ra, the ratio. It's, again, we're limiting what they could do before, so.
So.
So, in other words, I, I would agree with that, but it comes back to the ratio. We're, we're, we're taking a space or a position which they could have put up a billboard before away from the industry.
Okay. So you would be in favor of the proposed change as written by Mr. Frankovich?
But I want everybody to understand, you know, I wouldn't be in favor if we don't lower the ratio. It's a, in other words, you can either lower the ratio or, to me, it's, it's, we're, we're doing another restriction, another regulation for them to limit their business. Where before they could, you know, whether it was static or whether it was digital, they could put up a billboard. If we don't put that, if we don't put that statement in, we don't put in "on the same side of the street."
Okay, so you're in favor of "on the same side of the street"?
I didn't say that.
That's, I need an, I need one way or the other. We've got two choices. You don't get a third.
Then I'll vote afterwards. Because, again, it all, to me, it all comes back to the ratio. You know, if we're going to take, if we're, we're already taking away.
With Commissioner Kaufman, we've already kind of decided that we're probably not going to agree on a ratio, and we're going to send several different ratios on to city council with a number of people supporting these different ratios. That's why we're trying to get through these other items.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Commissioner Woosley?
All right. Wait a minute. You can't abstain, I, I mean, you can abstain from the discussion because this is not a motion, but when it comes to time for the motion, you have to vote one way or the other. It's either up or down. Now, this discussion is simply a discussion looking for ways to resolve this and find ways to compromise. But when it comes to the motion, you're going to have to vote one way or the other, okay?
Okay. You know, the other, the other thing is, the way that, that we've got this written is that you can always, through the SUP, get that number reduced.
Commissioner Woosley?
I still support as it's written by staff.
Commissioner Romeo?
I'd like the same side of the street reference.
Commissioner Harris?
I'd like to insert the language "on the same side of the street" as well. Keeps the, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. And I'm in favor of the proposed same side of the street. So, we may just pass that on to council.
And was that for school classroom buildings and residential?
That was for the proposed change by Mr. Frankovich.
Okay.
To add "on the same side of the street." That's all it was. The other that we've already.
So that goes with both?
Yes.
Okay.
We've heard one-to-one, we've heard four-to-one, we've heard less than eight-to-one. Commissioner Kaufman, would you like to start?
I think that one goes to the city council and says, hey, we can't come up, I don't think anybody will agree on a number. So I'm one-for-one.
Okay. Commissioner Romeo?
As it sits right now, I think I'd be the same vote, one-to-one.
Commissioner Harris?
I still remain at the one-to-one.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Eight-to-one.
Eight to one.
Commissioner Wusley?
Four to one.
And I'm a one to one. So that's four in favor of one to one, one in favor of four to one, and eight in favor of eight to one.
Is that for all areas of the city, including Virginia Street?
We did not break it down to Virginia Street. We were specifically working on the eight to one ratio as it stated in number 14. is conversation regarding the two to one on Virginia Street? Anybody? Do we want to leave it as is, which is fine with me? I know, I understand. So, you know, that...
Well, wasn't the two, wasn't the two to one supposed to be less than what we were gonna come up with to, as an incentive? So if we're, if we have a consensus at one to one, would it be one to one through Virginia Street or should it's...
Yeah, if you did two to one, then it would no longer be an incentive, obviously.
Because that's kind of the opposite of what we're...
But it was put in there because council had directed us to determine incentive to clean up Virginia Street.
Okay. So there's no need to even address that issue because the one to one is less than the two to one that there, that was proposed?
Some of that forward that you don't want to have an incentive for Virginia Street?
No, I, that's why I say that we should still have the incentive for Virginia Street at two to one. It may not...
How's that an incentive now?
Then the other one would have to be higher than two to one.
The other one would have to be higher, it would have to be at least three to one for it to be an incentive.
To me, it's the same, not to put any on Virginia Street right there, but I guess, I understand what you're saying now. Council looking to remove some from Virginia Street, so...
Where, where on Virginia Street, south?
Between Plum and California was the main area of concern.
If nobody, I mean, if, if, if majority is looking at one to one throughout the city, then it's gonna be a one to one on Virginia between California and Plum. Council gave staff the direction to reduce that. To a certain degree, that's not a, a direction for us to go in, but it's where council wants their overall plan to go. Go ahead, Commissioner Kaufman.
Then I would say, if that's our recommendation, then the City Council votes to change that recommendation. I, I don't think everything that we're gonna present them with this, they're gonna like anyways. I mean, they're gonna have to go through some of the same pains that we have and...
I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that.
Mr. Chairman, what do we, what do we have in your list here that we have maybe not a unanimous vote, but at least a clear-cut majority? There's four to one.
Well, we have, we have a majority in the ratio. We have a majority in the distance of, to residential. And we have a majority on the proposed same side of the street spacing as proposed by Mr. Frankovich. We have a majority in those.
In the flip time, we have a unanimous...
Flip time is done, yes. The, the distance to residence has been taken care of. Claudia, did I miss anything? Those were the, I mean, other than the issue we haven't talked about...
Location, I think we had a majority on keeping it south and east of McCarran and then extending down to, I don't know, I thought we had a majority on that.
Yes, we have a majority on that one. And to the south, we, we don't, we haven't discussed this...
Extending it down to the freeway, to 395.
Yes, correct.
South we do, but we don't, north and west.
And then I just needed more clarification on the removal requirement. If you're doing one to one, if you wanted to increase the one to one so you could have an incentive on Virginia, to have Virginia at one to one? Or, and also, my other question would be, the one to one, does that need to be an existing board?
Say that again, the last part on the...
The one to one, does it need to be an existing board or can they use a banked receipt? You haven't discussed that.
That's, that's a good point. For, for those of us who were in favor of the one to one, is that using banked receipts? Or is, is that using existing structures? Commissioner Wusley?
Well, would not still, wouldn't everything still fall under the existing, you know, distances between each other? And if there happens to be one where they can place a banked, then that would fall into that category? Am I understanding that correctly?
Right. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, and it would still be square footage to square footage.
If there's an existing place to put a sign, that there is not a sign right now based upon the spacing that we've, we're recommending, then a person could put a sign up there without taking one down.
So then they would just need to use the banked receipt?
So they would use their banked receipt. I get, the incentive from, from council and their, their idea, you know, to clean up some, a specific area, you know, they, they would... The recommendation from us would have to be to entice billboard owners to want to take down two and put one up versus four to one or, or anything above that two to one ratio around, anywhere else around the city. And, and Claudia is right, we've got, you know, 50% of, of what comes down should come from the banked receipts, but on a one to one, you don't have that.
And, and I'll answer that, that the one to one is what we've come up with a consensus on. You don't have it, you don't have it. Downtown's gonna be one to one, anywhere else is gonna be one to one. City council wishes to change it, then they can change it. They have that, that opportunity and that authority. This is our recommendation to City Council, this isn't the final product by any means.
Commissioner Wusley?
I just think there needs to be more incentive in those certain areas and I just think that we don't get there with the one to one. And that's why, you know, I, I know that I'm outnumbered right now, but I heavily support going higher to four and, four to one.
Yeah, I, I think we could do a motion with what we've agreed to here. And it's not gonna be unanimous by any stretch of the imagination, but I think it'll probably be afforded to on what we've reached consensus on. Send those recommendations to City Council. You know, if it floats their boat, it does, if not, they can make changes. But at least we're getting off the diamond sending it to them.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Or they could send it back to us.
Or they could. And they have the option. But I, you know, we've been down this road, personally, I've been involved doing this since 2005. So, we've been discussing it and discussing it and discussing it. And this is the closest we've ever come to any kind of agreement. And I think we're real close because I think we have a major, even with a full, full commission today, we have, we would have a majority of votes. And how many times have we voted and things have passed four to three? If it passes four to three, there's a majority and there it goes. This is a recommendation to City Council, this isn't even the final say on an ordinance. So, I mean, I think we should come up with some, with a motion here and vote on it to pass it on to City Council.
I'm not in disagreement with what Commissioner Romeo just had to say. I mean, if, if, you know, I never thought we'd have 100% unanimous agreement on what we recommend and send to council. Would like to have thought that we, you know, we've given it our all and if we have, we have. The incentive, the incentive for, from City Council, the request for that to clean up between California and Plum Lane is a true concern. and yet, you know, I mean, if we go by existing ordinance and we've, we've, I mean, what do we, what do we do to, to, try and reduce the number of signs between California and Plum Lane? What can we offer? Commissioner Romeo?
I don't think we can offer anything. I think that's a policy decision. We deal with findings and we're supposed to deal with, with zoning and proper land use. And a billboard's a structure, we're trying to find out where it's properly done. If City Council wants to do something on the policy end of it, let them deal with the policy end. It was very unrealistic of them to recommend that this be put in before we even had a say as to what we were doing. Their assumption was our ratio was gonna be higher than what it appears that it's turning out to be. So I, I say that's what we've come up with, we've worked diligently for months and months and months and are actually this close now to sending something up to them. I think we should move forward with it. You know, how dare they make that assumption? Simple as that.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Claudia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in this instance, we are also a policymaking body, policy recommending body. That's what we're here to do, is recommend on a policy, give our opinion for what it's worth. They're gonna then give theirs to City Council.
That's true, they've asked you for your opinion on it.
And that, we do that, we do, we do, we have, you know, we're, we're supposed to be the, the experts in this realm on this board in terms of land use to discuss, think about, debate policy decisions. I think that's what we're trying to do. I think that council made it clear that that, that corridor on Virginia there from California to Plum is a priority, you know? I'm clearly outnumbered, but if you guys go with the one to one, I mean, I still think that that corridor is important, it's important to, to council and I think everybody sort of knows that. So if there is some way to provide an incentive there, it's important, but that's my two cents.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Claudia, in that area from Plum to California, is it, are there billboards that are privately owned? Or any of them, or are they all through a company like YESCO or Clear Channel or...
Independently owned?
Yeah.
I don't know offhand.
Because that, you know, that...
Give them all?
That has a decision, I would think, of if this ordinance, our recommendation is gonna clean that up or not. And as long as, you know, some of those have been down there, I would, I would think that'd still be a difficult thing. You know, somebody's not gonna put up a digital, you know, if it's privately owned downtown.
I, I know they're not all independently owned, they're not all independents. I know, I know Clear Channel owns at least some of them, they may, you may, they're saying all of them.
Well, at this point...
Then, Mr. Chairman, then can we restrict, could, could we do something in just that corridor then?
That's, yeah, that's what, that's what we're... Do you have a suggestion? Because see, here's, here's what, here's the way I understand it, is that if around the city, except in this corridor from California to Plum, we allow, we recommend that the ordinance states a one to one. You take one billboard down, you can put up one digital billboard. As long as the spacing is what it is, then what's the incentive for someone who owns a billboard between California and Plum to take one down if they're not gonna be able to put up a digital? Or what is going to reduce the number of billboards overall between California and Plum Lane as it's the intentions of City Council to, you know, remove some of those billboards or have some of them removed in a, in a, in a trade-out program? And that's, that's the, the issue, you know, that we're trying to figure out how to, how to create some incentive to minimize the number of billboards in that area. I mean, if you've got, and I'm gonna use a hypothetical number, if you've got 20 billboards between California and Plum, how do you reduce it down to 10? What, what's the incentive of somebody to give up that advertising space? Go ahead, Commissioner Wusley.
Wouldn't the simple answer that be to be able to be banking and use somewhere else, especially if you get an incentive? So it's not one to one, you're getting extra banked billboards to use somewhere there, in some other area, but just not in that area. You can't replace it within that corridor. So you take it out, you take one out and now have two banked for somewhere outside that corridor.
Does that make sense to, to you guys? Right. But the incentive would be, you, you can't exceed the cap number though.
Well, we're not exceeding the cap number. I mean, that, that's, that rule still stands.
Well, you would, because a bank, a bank is supposed to not exceed the cap either.
Well, I don't know, I don't know how many billboards we have in that corridor. And right now, we have a, you know, extra 40, but I understand that, you know, and once again, I'm, I'm still opposed because with the ratio at work, a four to one, you know, all of this would work. So obviously, that's my direction. But if we are looking to create an incentive and you still have a number to play with of not going over a certain amount of billboards, I mean, obviously, the whole ratio was, the idea was to get rid of billboards, but that would be an obvious incentive to me.
Okay. Yes, sir. If you would, please reintroduce yourself.
Ryan Saunders, Saunders Outdoor. I have absolutely no billboards in that area, but to expedite process, I think there's a quick solution. If, if you, if you want to get billboards out of an area and, and you want to offer that incentive, there's lots of federal laws that talk about just compensation. If you, if you want to get, reduce the number in an area, you can buy it. And that's a simple solution. Stick to the one to one, and if you really don't want it that bad, then, then ask the company what they'd be willing to sell it for.
Okay. Okay. Lori, would you like to comment on that before you leave?
Are you going to pay him now?
The last time I counted, South Virginia Street, that corridor, there was 17 structures with 33 faces, okay? All owned by Clear Channel. So, one of the things that we were not going to do is get involved in writing this ordinance for you. We're totally against this. But aside from that, why don't you just say that any digital that was going to go on that corridor had to have an eight-to-one? Because they own them all. They're the ones that's screwing this town. So make them, make it 16-to-one. Make it whatever you want. That the only people you're going to affect is this group over here, this multinational, multi-million dollar corporation.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. I'd still like to figure out if there is a way to create an incentive. Obviously, I understand Mr. Saunders' comments. Maybe if, if times were better, somebody might be interested in buying them out. But I don't see anybody buying the bank right now either, so I don't, I don't see that happening anytime soon. So, in ratios, do we have any other proposal we would like to send to council? If not, let's discuss a motion of recommendation or denial, and send this to council.
Commissioner Harris? No? Okay. Commissioner Stapleton?
I hate to say this, you guys, but I don't know how much a motion with one-to-one and no incentive for Virginia is going to help council at all, especially knowing their, you know, policy, you know, the way they were leaning on wanting at least some ratio and incentives for South Virginia. So, I mean, I think that's sort of the truth of the matter, that, you know, I don't know how much we help by doing that, in my opinion.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, but you, you can't have one ratio and then another ratio for, you know, South Virginia, because then it'd be no incentive to, to change any of those or upgrade any of those. And I, you know, sometimes I just don't think you can accomplish what's been asked. For us to try to do.
Marilyn, I have a question for you. Is it possible to condition an area not to have digital billboards?
Well, you already have defined areas that you can't have billboards, such as in residential zones and certain other areas, so you might want to try something like that.
Okay. Thank you. So this would not be any different if, if I proposed no digital billboards on South Virginia between California and Plum Lane, would be no different than what is written in this ordinance now, that we have discussed, will, will still discuss of the areas of Reno that, that aren't going to get digital billboards. And that wouldn't eliminate billboards. It wouldn't create an incentive, but it, it would not add digital billboards to the area.
Commissioner Harris?
So, Mr. Chairman, so I understand you're saying just in the Virginia corridor that would go from California to Plum, that would, it would stay the same. There's no incentive, there's no changes, however many are there, okay? And then we would remain one-to-one in the remainder of the areas that we agree upon?
Correct.
And with that in place, you can always revisit the ordinance at a later time. So if, in the future, those boards are reduced for whatever reason, you could always go back and allow them in that area if it does get cleaned up through whatever process it gets cleaned up.
Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Chairman, I, I like that idea. And I, the idea of this being something that's going to be set in stone, and it's going to stay this way forever, allows for those kinds of changes to take place in the future, if we so desire that you have to have particular, you know, changes, whatever it may be. And if, in fact, things do change, and, and we, we go down the road of Virginia Street becomes a, a completely different neighborhood, we can revisit those at that time. So I support that.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Does that, not knowing, I guess it would be a question for the billboard industry, I don't know how they would answer it. Does that create a genuine incentive, though, for, to just restrict digital on that quarter? Does it create a true, any type of incentive to take down any of the existing billboards? I mean, it clearly restricts putting up digital, but does it create any real incentive that will actually achieve that goal of reducing the clutter on that stretch?
Well, I guess, thinking through your thought process a little bit, if somebody wanted to put up a billboard, a digital billboard in that corridor, then a three-to-one ratio could be, or a two-to-one ratio, or a four-to-one ratio could be entertained. And it's, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud. I'm trying to keep the ball rolling and get it off a dead center right now. That's something that just came to my mind.
Commissioner Kaufman?
You know, I don't think that's, again, I don't think that's an incentive, in the fact that, you know, if I have 17 there and I have 40 others that I can change out, why would I?
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's not, but maybe at some point, it, it becomes cost-effective. I mean, you know, 10 years ago, we didn't have digital billboards, and we paid $8,000 to $10,000 for a 42-inch flat plasma screen on a wall that you can get today for $500, all day long. So with technology, more technology, price is going to come down.
And, and that might be what we see with, you know, digital billboards. They might see that this is the way to go, and people want to advertise only on digital, and...
And, and so maybe it, maybe it is incentive, if that corridor, if somebody wants to put a digital in that corridor, they're willing to give up three-to-one to, to have a digital up there, and, and the flips like we've talked about, you know? I, I don't know. I, I'm just talking out loud. I'm thinking out loud to try and keep things rolling.
Commissioner Wusley?
I actually like that idea. I mean, we're, once again, we're back to the ratios. But I'd, I'd like to, obviously, personally, like to create incentive everywhere, but right now, if you guys are entertaining that corridor and having an incentive of, you know, I'd still like to be one-to-four, I do think that would create an incentive to clean that area, and I could support that.
Okay. Mr. Frankovich?
John, John Frankovich, I, I did want to address this, because I think you guys are on a track here that could work. In that corridor, one of the problems is, there are, my client says there's not 17. She thinks there's between 10 and 12 signs there, but they are owned by Clear Channel. Most of them have been there for a long time. Most of them don't meet the spacing requirements of your current ordinance, but they're all grandfathered in based upon the existing ordinance. But if you were to create, if you want to put a digital in that area, you remove three, four, whatever you want to come up with, from that area, but in order to get, to really get it done, you'd have to say you waive the spacing requirements in that area. Otherwise, you really don't have room to put up very many, if any, digitals in that area, because the existing ones are too close together, if you understand what I, what I said. But that would give an incentive to say, okay, if I want a digital there, I got to take down...
Actually, Mr. Frankovich, that makes a lot of sense. You know, I, the only reason I took a deep breath of air is because then we get to step backwards one more step and, and create some spacing for that corridor, if that's what this commission wants to do. But your explanation is right on. So thank you. Equal time, would anybody else like any equal time on that comment? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll continue on with our discussion here. You guys heard an explanation from Mr. Frankovich. My question to staff is, do you think that is realistic, to establish specific spacing, specific ratio of billboards, digital, static, for that Virginia Street corridor?
Is it realistic? Yes.
Go ahead.
What that spacing would be, I'm not sure. If we, and, and again, I'm just thinking out loud here. I don't know if there's a grand plan of what you would want to see in that area. And to say within, I'd have to measure what the distance is for that area, and to see how many signs you would want in that area, either static or digital, and determine what that spacing would be, and then say that that's the number of signs in that area. Before it goes digital, you have to get to that number of signs. Take down 11 and put up two, or whatever it ends up being, and that way, we could clean up the whole thing and get to the spacing that we want to achieve in that area.
Okay.
So sort of plan it out for the area.
Go ahead.
John, could you?
I have, you say there's 12 in that corridor that are all, yeah, whoever knows.
John, you got to speak into the mic. I'm sorry.
Susan Hall, Clear Channel. There's probably about 12 structures in that area. One of the reasons why we haven't really, we have actually taken out some structures in the last couple of years in that area. If you, if you turn the spacing back into where the static boards are, it would make a lot of sense for us, because we could, we would be within the residential, because if you're going to do residential in that area, you roll out that 1,000 feet, we can't touch anything.
But at, but at a four-to-one exchange, you'd only have three boards from California clear down to Plum.
But the question is, am I going to want to take four boards out? It's got to make financial sense.
Well, we'll give you six months.
So, you know, I mean, if you go, I mean, what would work for us is if you go back to static spacing of what the current code is, that would help us in that area, and we would achieve the council's recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Okay.
We'll do it from California Avenue to Plum Lane, four-to-one ratio, static spacing based on the old ordinance. That way, theoretically, when it's done, there'd be three boards in there. That's a cleanup, to me.
Okay, since we can't verify the footage, Commissioner Romeo, should we condition it so that there's a maximum of four boards, doesn't matter what the ratio is, between California and Plum Lane?
That's being generous, but I don't have a problem with that.
You know, if we, and if we say four boards between California and Plum, to put up a digital, you're going to take down 25% of the boards that are there, and spacing is based upon existing static. I'm just...
Yeah. No, I have, I have no problem with that. I think that's an incentive to clean up that area. It would work as...
I'm sorry, go ahead, say that.
Just scaling it off of a map I have here, it would end up being about seven boards in that area, if you went back to the static spacing.
But there's only 12, 12 existing, so at four-to-one, that would only leave three. If we gave them four in that area, it would be a bonus.
But they have banked ones from elsewhere that they could use.
But Kevin's saying we put a maximum in that area.
We put a cap on that area. In that corridor, we'd put a cap of four boards in there.
From Ca, from California to Plum, four digitals, period.
Boards total, or four digital boards?
Four digital boards. So to put up a digital board, you must take down...
Four signs in that area?
Four signs in that area, yes, in that corridor. The exchange has to be limited to that...
We could only get two. If you have a four-to-one ratio, you could only get two. Correct? I'm looking at Susan for...
I thought it was three, and if we're looking to clean up that area, wouldn't three be ideal? I mean, it's not that long a stretch of a road, and that would be the four-to-one, if you're doing the...
Okay, so it'd be three boards?
That's what I said, but Kevin brought up four, so I'm perfectly willing to go with four.
But then, are we losing the, are we really cleaning up that area? I mean, I, I don't know. We're just...
We're going from 12 to four, and the old, pardon my French, Chair, the old crap hole of things that have been sitting up there for 70 years that are rotting in place, can be brought down, and we can put something nicer, somebody can put something nice in there. I mean, we all know that, that some of those look terrible.
But all you're doing with going above that three number is allowing banked ones to go in there, because already, you're already taking down the existing 12 boards that are there.
Well, remember, part of this original proposal was to eliminate some of the bank signs. That's in number 14 on page six.
But if you go to four, aren't you allowing then bank signs to come into that area?
No, there's only four total. We're taking 12 out, and there'll be four left. Doesn't...
You'd take 12 off, you'd take 12 off the street, and you would take four out of bank, if you allowed four signs to go in there at a four-to-one ratio. There's 12 signs on a four-to-one ratio.
So you end up with three signs.
Three signs, but I said if, if you put a cap of four on it. Okay, would, would you get, rather make a cap of three?
That would be my preference.
Cap of three?
Commissioner Harris?
Is the, just to clarify this, the cap of three would just be, would, would not involve any bank signs being involved?
Correct.
Okay. I could go with that.
Commissioner Stapleton? Comment? Suggestion?
I think we're doing the community a disservice by going with a one-to-one ratio, so for me, this discussion is, is moot.
Well, okay. Claudia, are you okay? Do you understand? I mean, we haven't...
From what I'm hearing so far, and I have one question that I need to clarify. So there would be a cap of three digital in this area, which is along Virginia Street between California and Plum. The ratio would be four-to-one. The four would have to be existing signs in the area. No banked can be used. And this spacing requirement would go to static, what, what it is for static, just for residential, or from each other as well? Because the residential, if you eliminate the residential, then it's only the 300, which determines where you can, where you're going to be measuring it to the east and west. If you keep it as the animated north and south, it would just go to what we have existing, which is 1,000, which they still would have the spacing for that.
They would have, they would have the spacing for that?
Yes.
Okay. So then, the proposal would be 1,000-foot spacing?
Correct. So you would just be, in that area, you would not enforce... Correct, so you would just be, in that area, you would not enforce the new wording of B four, page three.
Come back with that one again, please. You would not.
The portion they wouldn't be able, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, the portion they would not be able to meet in that area is the thousand-foot spacing from residentially zoned property. Although that's on the same street, same side of the street, so I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Although Susan's agreeing with me.
It should work because it's in that MU Todd corridor.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that. Susan, if you want to come up to the podium. Or John. Because the concern was the spacing from residential, but that's on the, they have it for a thousand feet on the same side.
Well, one of the problems, you're assuming if you've got three thousand feet, you can put three signs. It's nice if you owned all that property, you can do it. It doesn't work out that way in real life that you're going to own the piece right in the middle or have a lease right in the piece right in the middle. And that's why I said when, if you're going to do this in this corridor, you ought to have much, waive your spacing requirements so that you can fit three in there on the property you can obtain. Because you don't have a blank map when you're trying to place billboards, you have to lease it. I don't know how long that corridor is, and I thought the suggestion that it's not going to work out, the first one you put in there is going to be exactly in one-third, one-third. It just doesn't work out that way when you get into the real world. So if you, that's why the request was, let's have a five-hundred-foot minimum in there because then you can fit it in, the three signs, if that's the number that you are looking for. Because if you try to divide the whole corridor by three, don't forget there may be one across the street just outside of it, and you can't be within a thousand feet of that one. So there's a lot of parameters working here, but if in that corridor you really wanted to do that, if you just put it down to the five-hundred feet, it would probably work. And it should apply also to the static residential ones. I don't know what the residential situation is because it's not the Todd corridor issue, it's the underlying zoning that was there before that determines that residential. As we sit here today, we didn't, I don't know what that is, maybe you do, Claudia, if you do.
Well, I don't believe that, it's not, that's not in place.
See that?
The residential zoning is, that wording is not in the draft ordinance, that we wouldn't be determining.
Well, none of this is in the draft ordinance that we're talking about.
No, I'm saying that where we put in for the MU zoning district, we base it on what the zoning was prior to MU. We don't have that in, we don't look at residential prior to the MU. We only look at the MU.
I'm not sure I understand. So I can't answer the question on the residential, but on the spacing between the two signs, I think the answer is if we have the existing one for static, we could work in that corridor.
Okay, so, thank you, John, Mr. Frankovich. I wouldn't have a problem with five-hundred-foot spacing as long as we have a cap of three digital billboards and no static billboards to be erected from bank in that corridor. In other words, when all is said and done, there's either the signs that are up there now in static or three digital billboards go up and no statics at all in that corridor. That cleans it up. And so you lose, you would lose those banked signs if you have any, which it appears there may be some because we've just heard that some, several have been taken down over the last couple of years. Those can't go back up. There's a cap of three, three signs in there. Or three, a combination of three digital, static billboards. Anybody think I'm out in left field or what?
No, I think you hit it right on the head. When it's done, that area's going to have three, period.
I can completely support the five-hundred feet and that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay, and if I can just clarify the five-hundred feet, we keep throwing around two different terms and I'm sorry to get picky on this. I've heard the same as static and I've heard five-hundred feet. The same as static would be seven fifty.
Change it to five hundred in this corridor.
Okay.
So static and digital will be five hundred feet in this corridor only?
I can't change static.
You can't? Oh, that's right, because we're only doing digital. Excuse me, sorry. Static is seven fifty and digital is five hundred.
In this corridor only?
In this corridor only. Marilyn, would you like to add something?
No, I'm, as you have talked back and forth, I'm just considering who, you can't write an ordinance for a group who owns it or a corporation that owns a particular thing. It has to be across the board for anyone. So I'm trying to envision if another company or another person decided that they wanted to erect a billboard when you only have five hundred feet and they had one in the bank or they sue in order to get one. I'm just kind of running this around in my mind a little bit, trying to do this because you keep working off of, well, this is Clear Channel. Well, we're not concerned that it's going to Clear Channel or any other company. We are concerned with how many billboards are there and how many you're going to end up with.
That's why my intentions are that currently there are banked billboards for this area, there are existing structures in the air. In order to put up a digital billboard, you must take down four or remove four from bank, I guess. No, no, none, no removal from bank. So you must take down four structures in order to put up one digital.
Four structures within the area, is what I'm hearing you say, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm running all this through my mind.
Yeah, a maximum of three billboards in this corridor. Digital billboards.
But that's not saying how many static billboards could remain.
Well, that's where I was headed with this.
Well, okay, and that's fine. I'm just listening.
To, to put an overall cap, it doesn't matter who owns the rights to structures, that there would only be three billboards total, digital or static, combination thereof, between California and Plum Lane. Would that be too restrictive?
Oh, I don't. I don't think it'd be too restrictive. I think you can.
If Company A owns twelve sites right now and somebody wanted to put up, Company B comes in and wants to put up a digital billboard, they could go and buy four signs from Company A and put it up. And there's nothing that we're doing to prohibit that.
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking through this process and you're not going to have this happen all at one time. So you're going to have a combination of presumably digital and static. And I'm just trying to work my way through it, listening to your discussions as you go along.
And I appreciate that and that's why I'm trying to clarify it also so that you're comfortable with it and that Claudia is comfortable with what I'm, what we're trying to get her to write for post-ordinance.
Well, when the, when the first digital would go in, you would theoretically have eight existing boards still in place and one digital. The second one went in, you would theoretically have four standing boards and two digitals. When the third digital went in, then you would have three digitals and no other conventional type boards. So there would be a period of time when you would have a mixture of both of them. But the end result is to get them cleaned up and to get them to the digitals and there's only three left.
And I don't, I think your goal is fine. My question is, what happens if you don't have certain spacing or you only have so much spacing during that transition period? And I'm just trying to think that through in terms of what could be, what could happen. That's all.
Commissioner Wusley?
And that's a good question. Do we leave ourselves open to other companies coming in and putting static billboards in that location that have the ability to do that? Because the spacing is now, is now open. So we're taking down existing digitals, but can someone else come in and say, oh, well, now I'm, it's legal for me to go ahead and put up a static billboard?
We're not proposing to change the spacing on static boards. That's what it is today.
Right, but when you're taking down static billboards, then you're opening up spaces. So now you're creating more opportunity for other people to come in and put in other static. So then we would just be adding potentially more static billboards.
See, you don't know where the billboards are going to come down. And that's, and that's what you're hearing is, is maybe a billboard on this end, maybe a billboard on that end. Or it might be all four billboards right up against each other, which creates the opportunity for two static billboards as far as the spacing is concerned. Now you've.
Do we propose the condition then, billboards in succession? That may not create enough spacing though.
That's true, and that's why, you may, you may just have to do this and give us a chance to think about this and propose any changes we come up with to city council. That may be the best we can do. It's after all, it's eleven-thirty and I think we're all probably getting a little tired. But at least your concept of what you want can move you in that direction.
I was going to say, I think with the discussion here, I think I can put this in wording and if any issues come up while we are writing it, as I look at Marilyn, then we will raise those with city council. And if they have additional concerns with it and they want to send it back to you, then they can do that or they can work it out themselves.
I am completely comfortable with that. Commissioners?
Should we do this as a motion with the issues that we've got a consensus on?
Yes, we certainly can and Commissioner Romeo, I appreciate you doing that.
Okay.
Before you start though, I just want, one last time, is there any other comments regarding this? I mean, if we make a motion and move forward, we're sending a recommendation forward if it gets a unanimous vote.
It won't be.
I'm sorry, not unanimous? A majority. I'm sorry, thank you, Marilyn. Yes, it is eleven-thirty. A majority, okay? So, good?
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Go, Commissioner Romeo.
Okay, in the case of AT dash thirty-two dash zero seven, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the text amendment to the Reno Municipal Code by ordinance with the corrections of ratio being one to one, distances static three hundred, digital one thousand, flip times of eight seconds, less than a thousand feet with SUP and residential three hundred feet with, however that was explained on one B. Thousand-foot spacing on same side of street. The south extension on South Virgin, on the South Virginia corridor is okay. No comment on the west and north extensions. And a rate, a maximum of three digital billboards in the area between Plum and California at an exchange rate of four to one with spacing to be determined later by staff, but not to exceed five hundred feet. I can make the findings.
One thing I did hear is that the ratio of four to one, the four were to be removed from the area?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's in the Virginia corridor.
Did I not say that?
Marilyn just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Kaufman?
I'll second that motion and I can make the findings.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any comments?
Yeah, I got.
Claudia, are you okay on? Yeah, good.
I have a comment.
Commissioner Romeo, comment, please.
I know you're going to kill me, but this has been a long, hard road. I, you know, for me, it's been six years. For Kevin, it's been, Doug, you've been here forever. And I know this isn't perfect and it's not what I envisioned going forward, but I appreciate the patience of my fellow commissioners and the people that are sticking around here to give input. Thank you. We can't do this without you guys. And even Scenic Nevada, who's no longer here, they keep sending us emails. And strangely enough, I do actually enjoy getting that input. So thanks for the hard, for the hard work and, you know, I know city council's going to kill this, but it's the best I think we can do.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. Ditto's to your comments. Personally, I would like to say thank you to those of you who are still here and been on this ride with us. Obviously, you have a personal stake in it, but, you know, people like Scenic Nevada who have been here all along, they have a personal stake in it too. It's their personal interest. And I appreciate what they've done. It's a hard decision, but with all the input, it's been an easier decision. I feel like we've really, we're sending a recommendation that is of quality on to city council to make final decisions. And that's where the final decision will be made. So with that, we have a motion. We have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, four to two is a vote of recommendation. Nays were Commissioner Wusley and Commissioner Stapleton. And absent this evening, as noted earlier, was Patty Egan. Doug, Commissioner Kaufman had the second? And with that, you guys can all look forward to seeing an agenda soon for city council. Thank you. Let's move on into our agenda and see if we can get the rest of this wrapped up. Next on our agenda, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. We didn't have a meeting last month. We will have one this month. Staff announcements, Claudia?
None. The only action from council, I believe, is the amendment to the on-prem signs and that was approved by city council.
Thank you. Commissioners, suggestion for future agenda items? None. Public comment? This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. With that, I will open public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under public comment? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and motion for adjournment is accepted. Thank you.